Good morning, everyone, and welcome to day three of our budget workshop. I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience and those of you by way of television. At this time, we should have the roll call. All calls are present, they'll be known by reason right here. I wanted to just add that Commissioner Farley will not be able to attend today due to some personal reasons. At this time, we have the approval of the agenda.
As I move.
As I move, and probably second that the agenda is approved. Before we get started with Dr. Moore, and welcome Dr. Moore. We have some statements from our manager, Scott.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a couple of follow-up items we wanted to present to you, some questions that had came up, and we've tried to gather this information as quickly as we can. And Dwayne and I are going to go over these. Dwayne, if you'll cover this first one that we've got here?
Sure. I don't know if it's maybe around...
Have they been passed out, Jenna?
Okay. All right. The first item was a request from Commissioner Garris directly to look at the total budget for the Pitt County school system, and to also include the annual debt service, the amount of annual debt service that Pitt County is paying on behalf of facilities for the school system. And so you'll see that figure at $243,456,142.
So within the total operating budget of the $233,195, the county's current expenditure appropriation of...
Current and capital of $35,360,000.
Within that $233,000.
Correct.
So is this 2016, '17, or '17...
16, '17.
16, '17.
Yes, sir.
That's right. Thank you.
The next handout, we had an offline inquiry regarding the Chikad school expenditures, as to how much we've spent on the Chikad expansion, whether it's been capital construction, sewer, just all the different phases. Do they have those? Okay. Let that get around to you first. Okay, so before you, you have the Chikad school expenditures on capital, you see the three different phases, and you'll see that the total amount that's spent is $22,949,248. Now, that will be, I believe, it was mentioned for a school campus of 1,100 students, as I recall, from the Dr. Linker's presentation. So that's where we are, and you can see the Phase 1 is complete, obviously the sewer has been, is complete in place. Phase 2 is in progress, and then Phase 3 is...
Is yet to begin. There's an estimate of anywhere from $5 million to $8 million on that. So they have not started Phase 3. Again, Phase 2 is still in progress. But this is what, what's on the books right now, is anywhere, an estimate anywhere from $5 to $8 million. Dollars have not been committed for that as of yet. And also, just to remind some members of the board and to inform others, was able to identify a fiscal year 2010, 2011 facility needs survey that Pitt County Schools completed. And at that time, they had calculated or projected that the Chikad total project would be $20.9 million. So that was the preliminary estimate at the beginning of all of the phases, and so right now, this is what it's projecting to be about $22.9.
Okay.
And the revenue to do that has been identified?
To do...
To do this work, it's...
To do all of it.
Primarily, quarter cent sales tax, I believe, has been dedicated towards...
Quarter cent. There's also been some federal qualified school construction bonds that we've been able to secure, like for the, say, the... That's actually a different, different project. It's not, the QSCAPs are different, but on the sewer, we were able to secure a loan from the state on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
On the next handout, if that's, have that go around. The question on this was to look back, and we looked back five years regarding the locally paid teachers that are paid out of the county's appropriation to the school system. These would be teachers who would be normally funded via the state appropriation or the state's responsibility to fund this. And again, we'll let this get around to everybody. So the first page illustrates going back to, five years back to 1213, that there were 46 teachers funded out of local monies. Next year it was 45, the next year was 55, next year 49, and then the current year, 54 teaching positions, teacher positions. On the next page that is attached, we were also asked, I can't remember if it was during the meeting or offline, but the, what is the cost of these teachers, as well as the administrators and assistant principals? I believe this was the total of 54 teachers plus 19 administrators or assistant principals. You can see in the bottom right-hand corner of that chart and illustration, the local dollars are $4,29,766.73.
So we're looking at a 73 total on those positions. Do we have a total, I know we've got the teachers back to 2013, but do we have a whole total combination? Because I know a while back, we worked hard at getting that number reduced, because it was in the, I think, the hundreds at one time. And this is a big chunk, like Commissioner Webb said, that the, you know, the state should be giving us the money for what's needed, you know, to take care of our children in the schools, but...
We'll ask that. We'll further request that from the Board of Education.
Thank you.
The last page of this three-page stapled handout is to answer the question regarding fund balances for school systems. And this is what, when we asked the question, this is the information that was provided to us by Pitt County Schools, gave us some surrounding counties, and also gave us some counties similar in size to Pitt County. You can see that the Pitt County School Systems' fund balance is 12.3%, with $3,444,107 being in their fund balance. And you can see that the fund balance varies by whether large county, small county. We've discussed this in detail and believe that it's important for a school system to have fund balance to some degree, but technically, there's probably not a need for them to carry a large fund balance, because they're receiving their current expense appropriation from the county on consistent increments, monthly. They're getting their state dollars, again, consistently. They would need fund balance. They don't have issues like we do with cash flow, in terms of when taxes are paid, ad lorm taxes. They're not having to deal with debt payments like we are, debt service, where the, our cash flow may be low, and we rely upon fund balance until taxes come in. If there's a natural disaster, say a hurricane comes in and blows a roof off a school, more than likely, they're going to come to the county commissioners and ask for assistance. They're also going to file an insurance claim on that and get, be reimbursed for it. The county normally would then be there to step in to help make that repair happen, and then, you know, be reimbursed by the school system via their insurance dollars. So, again, the story here, the picture here is, varies quite a bit between all these systems, but in reality, it's probably not necessary for a school system to have a large fund balance. Now, I will say, the philosophy in Pitt County for the past 15 years since I've been here is that when they build a new facility, they, when they build it and they design it and they spec it out, they do not spec furnishings within that facility. They've always relied upon coming back to their fund balance to pay for all the desks and chairs and media equipment and so forth. So from the school system's perspective, that is, is one way they operate. Now, those furnishings could be rolled into the overall package for that building construction, and could be paid via the, whatever the term of that note or that debt instrument is. So, I don't know if the board has any questions, but we were trying to respond to the inquiry on this. The next handout, and the last handout?
Scott.
Yes, sir.
Let's go back to head count for a minute. The 54, I understand, because that is consistent with the handout that Dr. Linker gave us yesterday, page six of his handout. But in addition to those 54 teachers and the 19 administrators and assistant principals, we also pay for 142 clerks and 60 maintenance technology people.
Correct.
Now, that, isn't the clerical and the maintenance technology, isn't that also a responsibility of the state?
Yeah, to a certain degree.
To a certain, to a certain degree, I believe.
Now, the maintenance, I think, is our responsibility, just like at Pitt Community College, the maintenance is our responsibility. Clerical, I don't have a clear picture on clerical. Definitely the administrators, assistant principals, and teachers. The clerical, the 142, we can search that out.
Because, you know, that's the bigger number.
Right.
Can I just share, if it's like it used to be, the state, you get a certain amount of money for your personnel to serve that number of students and that many schools, and then the local school determines, you know, teachers and workers as far as custodians and that sort of thing.
But my question is, is that the expectation that the state is supposed to pay that, or are we supposed to pay for it locally out of our property tax? That is, that's my question.
That's the point that I was trying to make, that the state assumes that the money they send based on your student population, that it will cover it. Now, when you have these great big schools, big high schools, they don't give you that extra money for an assistant principal. You know, and when you've got 1,000-plus students, you're talking about, you know, you need more administrators. But the way that money's used is still determined locally.
But my whole point is, that it appears to me that the state is not fulfilling their responsibility in supplying the money. They say that it costs X dollars to run a school, but we know locally, it takes a whole lot more than that, including assistant principals and teachers and clerical help. I mean, you've got to have clerical help.
You're exactly right.
And that's 142 positions. That's a lot. Okay, thank you.
We can see clarification on that for you. Get that back to the board. We have one last thing to follow up on, if we can...
Scott, before we move on, just that $4.029 million, what is that in terms of property tax? How many pennies does that account for?
I'm going to estimate three and a quarter, but Dwayne's going to calculate it.
3.2 cents.
3.2?
3.21 cents.
I just wanted to have that number for my own personal edification, but I mean, that is a, that is about 5% of our total tax rate. 10% would be 6.8, so 4-ish to 5-ish percent of our property taxes.
4.6.
4.6 percent.
Almost 4.7%.
Of the property tax that we levy goes to pay for just this.
Yes, and if you add the clerical help in there, it would be double that or more.
So that's just, that has nothing to do with you guys, the school system, or anything. That is just strictly to show that the state is costing the tax-paying citizens of Pitt County 5% of their tax rate, or 3.26% just on this, one thing that is not a county responsibility. Thank you.
Jimmy, when you said clerical, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to the number on page six of the handout that Dr. Linker gave us yesterday. It's, he has it outlined there as principals, assistant principals, clerical help. And it's all says, it's locally funded.
Right, locally paid.
It says all of those positions are locally funded. So, and we know that the 54 and the 19 on page six is supposed to be a responsibility of the state, and it would appear to me that the 142 ought to be a responsibility of the state also, but I don't know, because that's clerical. You can't, if you're going to have principals, you've got to have clerical help.
Yes, so I can tell you, based on the North Carolina general statutes, if I'm understanding your question correctly, from the, for the operation of schools, what is the state required to pay and what the county is required to pay is your question, right? Okay, so according to the general statutes, I'm just going to read it right out to you. The general statute's assigned to counties the responsibility for funding capital outlaid expenditures, and those are defined to include school facilities, furniture and apparatus, buildings for bus and vehicle storage, library, science and classroom equipment, water supply, sanitary facilities, and keeping school buildings in good repair. Counties also have the responsibility to fund some operational expenditures, specifically school maintenance and repairs, instructional supplies and reference books, school property insurance, and fire inspections. That's it.
So it does not say clerical?
No.
Okay. So that's another 142 positions the state is supposed to be providing.
And that's not included in the 4 million?
Right, so if we can monetize that, I mean, I would be very interested in the number.
So you'd like to see the full number, fully loaded?
Yeah, and not, not trying to create more work for you, but I mean, what we're doing is trying to really build a picture and educate the public on where the county's at with very limited funds, and the fact that we're taking on so much responsibility. And I forget the percentage, and I'll try to look it up, but I know the Association of Commissioners did a comparison of state responsibility, the portion of capital that the state is picking up, which is equal in somewhere between 1 and 2%, and then the portion of operating that the counties are picking up is over 20-some-odd percent. And so they're not being equal partners with the counties. They're using counties as a funding source, so that they can say, we didn't raise taxes, we cut taxes, we have a surplus. Meanwhile, back at the ranch, we're having to raise taxes to cover the things that they're supposed to be paying for, and it's just beyond frustrating to me that it's not being covered that way. It's not being presented that way by the state. They're ignoring their responsibilities in certain areas. And I recognize they have a very tough job, and I wouldn't want the responsibility of the $22 billion or $210 million per county, if they wanted to divide it up evenly. But, but anyway, it's just frustrating, and I'm sorry to create more work for you, but I just think the public deserves to know the monetary value of the things that are getting shoved down to us, and this is in one department. I believe for Dr. Moore's department, it's a million dollars in unfunded mandates, something like that. So, I mean, we're, we're well over and above what a, you know, partners pick up their responsibilities. That's, I'm sorry for soapbox, Mr. Chairman.
We have...
Commissioner Ward, I think you have...
I'm assuming this handout we got on employee turnover kind of has to do with, like, supplements a little bit, maybe, because they, well, they referred to that a lot.
Now, this is, this is to answer Commissioner Farley's question about the overall employee turnover for the, our organization, Pitt County Government?
Oh, government, thank you.
And I had mentioned, I thought it was about 12%, which it is in the 2016. You can see how it varies going back from 2007 to 2016, and you can see kind of the cyclical recessionary nature of, from '07, '08, and '09, when we were in the recession, you can see employees were not leaving quite as quickly. And then you can see, once we started into recovery, that what the trend has been. In talking to our HR Director, Florida Hardy, I was asking her, in terms of what she reads in publications for local government, and what our comparable county is doing, are we pretty much similar, synonymous to them? And she said, yes, that this 12%, 10% is very much a typical rate. It's not anything out of line, and it's, it's what we would expect.
Well, these down years, weren't they also when we were not, if someone retired or left to go to someone else, we didn't fill those positions for a few years?
Well...
That's not it?
I think that was probably, probably '09 and '10.
That's what I mean.
But this is basically, this is all people who live, who leave employment with Pitt County Government, whether retirement, termination, whatever it might be.
Right. Well, I do want to say one thing about the supplements. I didn't say it when we were talking about the budget. It's important that we do research on that, because there is a lot of research out there about retention. And when you look at a metropolitan area like Raleigh, when they hire teachers there, the living expenses are so much higher, there has to be a tag, you know, to get people to come there. And I know I've had students to go there, and they have left because they can't fulfill the living standards. And there, it is, in, here in Pitt County, we're blessed to have a university right here that produces a lot of teachers, and many of them are happy to stay here. And we do a really good job in the school system of recruiting these teachers. And I'm not saying teachers should not have a supplement, but I'm saying that I'm not sure that it has the impact. And I think maybe, once we get the budget out there for the schools, they need to determine how much of their budget they want to use towards supplementing the teachers. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there were a few other questions that are still outstanding, we're doing research on them, but as we get those pulled together, we'll report back to the board.
Okay, very good. There's no other comments?
No, Melvin.
Yes, sir.
Jimmy, you referred to the presentation by Dr. Linker on page seven.
Six.
Six, as being inclusive of clerical maintenance and technology staff. The handout we just got today on page two of that, referencing the 4 million, it says that the clerical maintenance and technical staff is not included. So that must imply, that would answer the question, and that come from other sources, not county money. Is that correct?
No, Chairman, no, because the way we asked the question to the school system was...
Well, is this wrong here, then?
No, the way we asked the question to the school system is, what is the cost of those 73 locally paid positions, being the teachers and administrators? So they gave us what we asked for. We didn't ask for the total cost of all 275, but we're going to go back and ask that now.
Right.
So they gave us what we asked for.
Thank you.
Other comments? Here none? We're now on the train. And thank you for your patience, Dr. Moore. It's something that we had to attend to. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I appreciate you giving me some time this morning on your calendar. We'll try to quickly move through this, but we wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about what's going on with Public Health Department and where we're going. First of all, I want to thank everyone for their support. We celebrated our 100 years back in April during National Public Health Week. A lot of people don't realize it, but North Carolina had the first local county health departments in the nation, started in 1911, and we were one of those first, we were in the first 10 in North Carolina in 1917. And it started around getting men prepared for World War I at that time. Large flu outbreak, some of you may have heard about during 1918. Many of our cemeteries have, have those graves from the flu epidemic in 1918, and I'm sure many of us lost family members back then. So that was the stimulus, really, that brought public health to eastern North Carolina, particularly big problems with hookworm, that couldn't get recruits into the war. We've been doing preventive health for 100 years, and population health for 100 years. A lot of our discussion around healthcare today is really around those two things, that we need to do a better job of taking care of the population, we need to do a better job of preventive health, and public health really are the experts at that, because we've been doing it for 100 years, and particularly here in North Carolina. So this was our celebration day. You can see Dr. Trevathan was there to celebrate with us. He gave us a lecture that morning about some of the diseases we no longer see in public health, like polio, smallpox, and things that he remembers from his day as a pediatrician and a neurologist. So our Board of Health, which you appoint, we've got some new members. Dr. Keith Ramsey is our chair. Dr. Ramsey is here in the audience this morning. He's an infectious disease specialist, has been with ECU, and is now with Viden Medical Center. Dr. Mark Hayes, a local veterinarian, many of you probably know. Mr. Coulson, our commissioner on the board, has joined us this year, and we really appreciate his participation. Dr. Lady Acock, optometrist from Farmville. Tina Dixon, who also is an at-large member who works at Viden. Mr. Rex Fleming from North of the River has been a great addition. Dr. Natesh Patidar, a farm D, he is a doctorate in pharmacy and works here locally. Porter Stokes is another at-large member from the Aiden area. Dr. Marty Engelke just joined our board. She is a longtime nurse, has been in Pitt County for over 30 years, taught at ECU School of Nursing, or College of Nursing, and still does. Dr. Adam Harrell just joined our board. He took the place of Dr. D.H. Taylor, who's served many years on the board. Dr. Harrell is a graduate of the East Carolina School of Dentistry, so we welcome him, and Mr. Lowell Spate, who is an engineer also who works with Viden. So we welcome those new members and appreciate, and Mr. Spate took the place of Jeff Wilson, who also served on our board for a good time as our engineer. He works for Patheon, so he's been replaced, but great service from these board members. Just to remind you, our divisions, we have five divisions. Environmental Health, that do everyone's inspections of food and swimming pools and tattoo parlors and septic tanks and about everything else you can name. The General Assembly is talking about more things that we're going to probably be doing and inspecting going forward. Personal Health, our clinic, is our clinic divisions that provides all our clinic services. That's where our nurses, most of our nurses reside, and that's also our clinic and outreach. So we go out to communities and homes and provide nursing services, as well as some social work support that help patients get the healthcare services that they need. Health Education Division is, is small, but it's critically important. As I told people last month, when, when public health really started back in 1917 here, the, most of the budget from the state was for health education. It was about educating people how to protect themselves from these diseases. And then our Nutrition, WIC Division, which speaks for itself, but we've got a great staff that serves this county. I think I hit the wrong button. There we go. Okay, so here we are with this year's budget. We had $10.7 million budgeted as of April the 30th of this year. We're right at $8.3 million, so we're about three-fourths of the way through the year, and, and we're, I think, appropriately earning. As you can see, some of that is money like Medicaid that takes a little while to get it in, but we will get it before the year is out. So our expenditures look like this. We have spent $7.8 million. So our revenues are greater than our expenditures by about a half a million dollars, which is good. Here's our fiscal year this year compared to what's proposed for next year. And this, as you see on the right-hand side, the fiscal year 2018, is what the manager has recommended with 10.967 in revenues and expenditures and 127.15 FTEs. So we break down the proposed revenues like this, 27% state and federal funding, 43% county, 14% fees and charges. That's mostly the environmental health fees and our clinic fees that we're charging. Fund balance was budgeted at 8%, however, we also budgeted about that much this year and haven't spent any of that fund balance this year, and don't expect to spend any of it this year. Miscellaneous is also at 8%.
Dr. Moore, the fund balance, been your Medicaid fund balance?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah. Scott was just clarifying, that Medicaid is the fund balance that we have. That's a reserve fund balance, I guess. It has to be spent in those programs that it's earned. Any other questions on that breakdown there?
Jimmy, what does miscellaneous is, Doc?
It's grant funding, mostly private grants. So some of our grant funding comes through state and federal sources, probably the predominance does, but we also have some private grants that we receive. We've had Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation. The Viden Foundation has funded many of our efforts over the years. Duke Endowment... Duke Endowment. So, Kate B. Reynolds, we're, we're applying for money. The Eddie Smith Foundation. So, we apply for money anywhere we can get it to, to try to get some of these things done.
I ask you that every year, but I do it purposely so that the public will know what that is, and I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. These are our, our proposed expenditures. You can see about eighty percent of our, our money goes towards salary and fringe, with twenty percent operating. That's typical of a, I have to say, that's typical of a health department, where you have a, a lot of nurses and medical folks that are providing services. So, the proposed budget by the manager includes a two percent cost of living and a net increase in FTEs of one-point-seven-five. Here's our grant-funded programs. We always do want to make a point that we pull in a lot of grants into the county, about two-point-nine million dollars. You can see out of our ten-plus-million-dollar budget, almost three million is grant-funded. So, we, and many of those grants, we pass to other agencies in the community. So, that's not just things we're doing in the health department, but we're pulling down money and then giving that to the agencies in the community that can accomplish those things in the best way and most efficiently. So, this is an area I wanted to, I talked a little bit about last month during our, our celebration, but it, it's not good news for Pitt County, and, and it, it is sort of old news, because it was covered pretty well in the media last month. But I did just want to bring this back to y'all and, and, and talk about it a little bit. Our county health rankings, this is something that's done nationally by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. They, they've been doing it now for about seven years. We've been involved in that. So, they're using data, some of it's old, some of it's more current, but we're compared with other counties across the state. And so, this does not rank us outside of North Carolina, it just ranks us compared to North Carolina counties. And what I wanted you to see, there's, there's two categories for that. One is health outcomes, which includes things like how long people live, and the other is health factors, which includes a lot of different things. The main one I want to talk about today is, is sexually transmitted diseases that goes into this health factor calculation. So, you can see in twenty-fifteen, our health outcomes, we were ranked thirty-ninth in the state out of a hundred counties, and forty-fourth for health factors. We decided about that time that we wanted to be in the top twenty by twenty-twenty. And we pulled together a group in the community, including the dean from the medical school and the CEO at Viedant Medical Center, to try to work on that. In twenty-sixteen, unfortunately, we went backwards. We went from thirty-ninth to fifty-ninth in health outcomes, and fell to fifty-seventh in health factors. This year, twenty-seventeen, we stayed steady with our health outcomes at fifty-ninth, but we fell significantly with health factors. And when you look at the health factor category, what you see is that the biggest issue there is sexually transmitted diseases. And I want to show you a little bit more detail on that. So, the data that you're getting ready to look at is, is, comes from the CDC STD twenty-fifteen Surveillance Report, and the twenty-fifteen North Carolina HIV STD Surveillance Report. And I have a copy of those here today, if you'd like to look at them. And the rates that we're looking at are expressed in one, per one-hundred-thousand population. I hope that makes sense to everybody. Feel free to ask, ask any questions if you have them. So, here's how we break down sexually transmitted diseases. The first column there is the, the rate, the national rate for the United States. And again, this is twenty-fifteen, but that's the most current data that we have. There's, there's new data coming out all the time, but the best data that's been, been reviewed, so it takes over a year for this data to actually, to reach us. You can see for syphilis, the, the USA rate is seven-point-five. North Carolina is not doing too well. Their rate is twelve-point-zero per one-hundred-thousand population. That ranks North Carolina as fourth worst in the nation for syphilis, fourth from the bottom. But you can see in the far-right corner, the rate for Pitt County is thirty-five-point-eight. Gonorrhea, similar statistics. USA rate, one-twenty-three-point-nine. North Carolina rate, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine. Puts us second-worst in the country for gonorrhea cases. And Pitt County's rate is three-hundred-and-twenty-one. Chlamydia, the most common sexually transmitted disease we're seeing in the United States today. USA rate, four-hundred-and-seventy-eight. North Carolina rate, six-hundred-and-forty-seven. That places us third-worst in the country. But look at Pitt County's rate. We have been nearly twice as high as the state average rate, which is nothing to brag about, folks. So, nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight-point-five. We are significantly worse than other places in North Carolina. And this is eastern North Carolina. I shouldn't, I, I don't want to pretend that this is just Pitt County. You know, this, other counties in eastern North Carolina have similar problems, but this is a big problem. And, and this is something that our Community Health Needs Assessment, both at the hospital and with the health department, that did, identified, our Pitt Partners for Health Group has identified this issue in the past. Our Board of Health has picked this as one of our three priorities. And we are trying hard to address this issue. And the reason I'm here today is because we, we had requested in our budget to the manager two positions. One is a health educator. As I mentioned, we don't have much health education staff. Almost all of our health education staff is grant-funded, particularly through CDC programs. And they're specifically aimed at, at things like diabetes or heart disease stroke prevention. So, we've got some staff to do that. We have one that's working regionally on tobacco issues, for instance, that's grant-funded. But we don't have a health educator. We have, years in the past, had someone that could do this STD work locally. And when I say locally, I'm not just talking about our health department, because these folks aren't just walking into the health department clinic. They do walk into the health department clinic, but they're also at our hospital, they're also at our private doctors' offices. Some of them are going outside the county to get treatment. So, if we're going to really have an impact on sexually transmitted diseases, we've got to get some people on the ground into the neighborhoods, into the places where these folks are transmitting these diseases, and do something about it. And that's what we're proposing to do. Our, our team has been discussing how best to get this done for some time now, and what we came up with was, was some really good strategies, that are evidence-based interventions that have been proven to work in other places. But we've got to have staff to do that with. And so, I'm here today to request both a health educator and one RN, registered nurse, a public health nurse, that would dedicate themselves to addressing this issue here in Pitt County. The total cost of that is a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, sir.
Doc, is there any correlation between this rapid increase in diseases connected to areas where they have a major university?
Great question. The way the cases are counted is by residence. So, if a student from a university gives their residence a Charlotte, that case is counted as Charlotte, okay, in Mecklenburg County. So, this is not just due to our university. I can say that very, very clearly, that it's not just due to our university.
I know it's a, it's a problem, and you've expressed your concern for it. You, you've referenced a lot of grants that you get. If there was a big correlation between the university and this, I was wondering if we, if they might get some funding from the university to help solve this. You, you talked about grants that came from Viedant and other places.
Right.
That's what prompted my inquiry.
Right.
Maybe you've already covered those grounds.
Well, I, I think the university does a pretty good job of addressing STDs with their, their clinical services. They're doing a good job of screening students, identifying, and, and educating. In fact, they have one of our former educators, health educators, on their staff now that, that they hired from us. So, I think they do a pretty good job with their students, but this is not a, this is not a university issue, I would say. It's, it's, it's not that university students don't have sex and transmit disease, but that's not where the, the biggest problem is.
Where would you say your biggest problem is, then?
It's, it's predominantly in African-American population, and has been for some time. Poor neighborhoods. So, the risk of disease, even nationally, if you look at, is significantly higher in the African-American population.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Ward?
This has been a problem for a long time, and a lot of times, when you try to address it, it is such an unpopular process, such as, I don't know if there's another name for it, but sex education, early on in our middle schools and late elementary, you know, you have an upswing of it, and then it stops. I don't even know if that's going on as a process in our schools, because that certainly is the best place to reach, you know, the largest number, early on, hopefully, so it would make a change.
Yeah.
I'm wondering about the ages a little bit of, do you have information?
We're talking about adults here. Yeah, sex education certainly is important.
But is that because they recognize it? I mean, I mean, do you know what I'm saying? In other words, I don't know, a sixteen-year-old, you know?
Yeah, this, this is not teens that we're talking about here.
But did they not report it themselves? Do you know what I'm saying? I, I think adults get, I don't know what the symptoms are, and I don't really want to hear them, but, basically, but, you know what I'm saying? And this is not just new. It seems to me that it's getting a lot worse.
It, it has gotten worse.
Yes, and this one health educator, you know, will they get out in the community?
Yes, absolutely.
In other words, I think we've got to go to the source. I think often we have, have, where the, most of them are located, or whatever, I don't, I just don't know, but I know that it, this just, I don't know how this compares, how does this compare to, say, ten years ago?
It's gotten worse. It's gotten worse.
It has gotten a lot worse?
Significantly worse.
Okay.
And it, and it, and it ebbs and flows, and you're right, this has been a problem for a long time.
A long time.
A lot of the, the National Public Health efforts back in the nineteen-forties were around sexually transmitted diseases. So, this is not new.
I remember early seventies, the same thing.
Yeah.
Particularly in the schools, they were looking at it, and that seems to have just gone down, the education component of it, hopefully, teaching them before they get out there as young adults.
I think that's being done. The, the health education, sex education in the schools, I think, is, is being done. So, that's not what we're really talking about here. This is not an effort around teen sexual activity or, or sex education in the schools. What we're talking about here is getting to adults, usually their twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, who transmit this infection, may bring it in from outside the community, other counties, and then transmit it. So, what we would do with health, with the health educator and the nurse, is go out into these affected communities. We already have folks who do disease investigation specialization. So, those, some of those are state folks, some of those we have on staff, who track known cases. What these folks would be doing is getting out into the communities, helping adults get access to condoms, help get them educated, identified, treated appropriately. One of the problems that we see is folks, and Dr. Ramsey can, can speak to this also, that come to the emergency room, may get seen and treated, but did not get followed up, did not get, may, may have gotten the wrong drug, because their culture wasn't returned yet. So, we've got to find those people again, get them into treatment, find out who they had contact with, get those people screened and treated before they spread it even more.
If you come to the emergency room, does the health department get a report?
Yes.
Okay.
We do now.
By the process, it may not be in time to...
Yeah, the, the report, often a culture may take a day or two before that result comes back, and by then, the patient's gone, and, and may have already had sex with someone else, exposed other people to this infection. So, it's, it's, it's epidemiology, it's, it's shoe leather work for the nurse and for the educator, getting out into the communities and, and, and getting people treated and educated how to prevent the transmission. But we know that we can get this kind of work done. We know from other areas that these interventions work, if you do them appropriately. So, that's where we're trying to go.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Dr. Morrow.
Yes, ma'am.
You answered some of my questions with your response to Commissioner Ward. What would you do differently with this position that you're not doing now? And/or how would you reach those adults that you're least likely to come in contact with before, you know, before the, the, the realization of that they have it?
Right. Great question. What we would do differently is get the health educator and the nurse out in those communities. One of the, one of the methods we know about that works is getting condoms into areas where those people frequent, so barber shops, beauty salons, those types of places, getting the education in there, getting the, the condoms out that prevent the transmission of the disease, identifying folks, educating them so they're, they're more comfortable getting tested, getting treatment, actually sending the nurse out in the community to treat, so we know that those folks are treated quickly and appropriately, before they can transmit it to anyone else.
There is a cost involved in the things that you said you would do.
Absolutely.
The cost of the condom, or the information flyer. How would you propose to pay for that as well?
We have some grant funds that help us with STDs, that could help us assist with purchase of condoms, educational materials. We think we can do that. What we're, what we're lacking is the personnel to actually go out and do it.
So, you wouldn't be an additional request for funds as it relates to...
No, we, this was, all the funds that we were talking about is the staffing.
Thank you.
Mr. Coulson?
Mark asked the question I was going to ask, so, nothing.
Listen, listen.
I'm trying to get an understanding of the head count. Now, these two that you are requesting here on page eight, I see on page six, you have a net increase of one-point-seven-five.
That's the, the manager's recommendation.
What are they for? Now, because Scott, if I look back at the, at the position request that you did on the Human Resources summary back on page twenty of your presentation...
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was going to cover that. The, we, we said that there is a, a net change of six positions overall. On page twenty on that, on that chart, under Public Health, there is a halftime position that is actually a hundred percent Medicaid-funded, that we basically didn't pick up. So, we are, and Dr. Morrow, in his presentation, included that as if it is being recommended and funded. I do recommend it. It's the Social Worker Two Pregnancy Care Management Position, halftime, but again, that's a hundred percent Medicaid. So, it's really a net effect of six-point-five positions are recommended out of the total of twenty-seven that were requested.
Well, I guess my problem is, I'm trying, I'm trying to match. If I look at Public Health on page twenty, it says manager recommended one.
Right, right above that, right above that one, where's a dash, it should say point-five-zero.
And, and I believe, John, that, that, we've got it listed as point-five. You, you, you've programmed it as point-seven-five, correct?
Okay, so that's the one-point-seven-five.
I believe they've programmed it as point-seven-five.
There was, there was a, it actually was a reduction of a, one grant-funded position went from one to point-seven-five, so that's where that other point-two-five went. one to .75, so that's where that other .25 went.
In the 2017 adopted budget, we had one FTE that we were assuming was going to be fully grant-funded by a Viden grant. The funding only allowed that position, once we got into the year, to be funded at a .75. So during this current fiscal year, we've actually reduced our head count by .25 for that. I think that's where the confusion might be coming in. And the, so the net 1.75 in the manager's budget, that is that .25 reduction I just mentioned, and then the addition of two grant-funded positions.
Okay. Commissioner Higginson.
Thank you, Dr. Morrow, for your presentation. And of course, I was going to ask you to just give us a few of your strategies on getting to improve our outcomes of this sexual transmitted disease. You did tell, when Mary asked, you gave some about getting out into the community and all. Do you plan to also, and I heard you when you said to Commissioner Ward that these are not teenagers, which I've heard, you know, some time ago, that a large number of these are within the senior population. So do you plan to go into the senior groups and talk with them and kind of get into that population?
Absolutely, yeah. And like I said, we've done some of this work in the past, but we really need more of it. We're talking about going to churches, community groups, anywhere we can get to that. We will do neighborhood, what they call block parties. We've done that some in the past, too. But we'll go into workplaces. So we've got some workplaces, work sites in the county that have high repopulations that need these services and want these services. So we'll be there, wherever we can get.
And this is a subject that is not discussed openly in our community, so it is going to be a challenge.
Yes, ma'am.
Listen, Horn?
I didn't get, from my perception, that Mr. Garrison's question was answered.
I was just trying to make the numbers match.
But maybe, between what you said, my question is this. What's your recommended, Scott and Duane, does it solve Dr. Morrow's problem?
No, sir.
Sir?
No, sir, it does not.
So they've recommended...
Excuse me, Doc.
Go ahead.
You respond, you're right.
Well, they've recommended 1.75 increases in our FTEs, and what I'm talking about would be 3.75. It's two additional positions.
And actually, just for clarity, and I was able to sort out the discrepancies. Actually, what we've recommended is 1.0, new positions for going into next year. There's a .75 position that was added during the current fiscal year, that's a grant-funded position. For purposes of their presentation, they reflected that .75 that was added for grant purposes this current year, plus the new one that we're recommending. And so the .5 that's actually listed on your sheet is a Medicaid position. At the time of our budget workshop, our budget conferences with the health department, we did not pick up that that was a 100% Medicaid-funded position. We plan to adjust their budget by that additional .5 and add the offsetting Medicaid to support that position. So what would be left unmet is two positions, the nurse and the educator, that Dr. Morrow is requesting.
So you're giving them half of what he requested in reality, after you do your hairs and the force and the fist?
Roughly.
Thank you.
Okay, that answers my question, what I just heard right then. And we're looking at the total cost of $121,182 for those two full-time positions. Dr. Morrow, are we ready to hit the ground running if you get these two positions?
Another good question.
I mean, is it going to take months to get in place?
It will take, it will take some time, because the budget won't be in effect until July. We'll have to...
But I mean, between now and July? In other words, I think that it's, if this were to get approved somehow, you know, I want us to have a plan so that when those people are there, we can start getting in these churches, we can start getting in these barber shops, or wherever we've got to get to, because these numbers are alarming.
Yeah.
I mean, it's frightening.
Yes, ma'am. We, as I said, we've been working on this for some time, so...
Because you can die of some of this.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Our staff has been working on the strategies. They've got those worked out. So what we're waiting for is two people to actually do it. But it will take some time. As state personnel, we've got to submit the job descriptions, get the positions approved. So we're probably looking realistically about November before we'd actually have people in-house to do the work.
Okay.
But that's a start. And so we'll get at least a half a year out of this, I think.
Okay.
Commissioner Carlson? You leave one, what I think would be an important statistic out, and it's transmitted the same way. What about AIDS? Does this parallel that? Do you have a number for that?
We do have numbers for that, and I'll be glad to share that with y'all. HIV and AIDS is, as you know, the treatment for that has improved significantly. The testing has gotten much better and much more prevalent. So it is involved in this, but not to the degree that we see. And we don't see the difference in the rates like we do for these other three diseases if we look nationally and statewide with HIV.
But all three of these are treatable, correct?
Yes, and HIV is treatable also.
Advanced stages, maybe not. But I would think that the AIDS ought to still be, are put into this statistic, because it follows, it's transmitted the same way predominantly.
It is, true. And the risk of HIV transmission goes up significantly with syphilis, for instance. But if folks are controlled on medications, and we've done a better job of getting folks infected with HIV into treatment and getting them on suppressive therapy, if you get them on suppressive therapy, then the risk of transmission is extremely low, almost nil. So we're actually in discussions now at the state about changing some of the control measure laws, because the medication suppressed the viral load so well for HIV that the transmission goes down almost to nothing.
Dr. Morrow, it is alarming to hear what you just said, especially in the African-American community. That certainly is a deadly situation. Based upon your studies in the other areas of the state and other, even in the nation, what are some of the evidence-based challenges of things that they are doing now to address this alarming concern in the, especially in the African-American community? What are some things that's been proven to work successfully to deal with this crisis? Because it is a crisis, though.
For instance, there is a program that's called Voices, that's a CDC-recommended evidence-based intervention that does pretty much what we were just talking about. It goes into communities, identifies high-risk groups, gets those groups together for discussions, condom distribution, education about transmission of disease, actual distribution of condoms and education on how they work and how to use them. And that has been proven to be successful in decreasing the transmission of disease. So that's just one example of one of the evidence-based interventions that's being used out there across the country that the CDC recommends for this.
And so in order to get that, you would need this health educators to get out in the community to perform this, to work with this.
Health education is just critical in this situation. A lot of people, I would say, don't appreciate how important health educators are for public health. But as I said, 100 years ago, that's what public health was about, was educating people about health. And that's critically what is needed with this problem here today. It's not just treatment, it's not just testing, it's education. And you have to have people with the proper training to know how to do this well. And health educators are, a good public health educator, I always tell folks, are worth their weight in gold. They can really improve the health of a community like nobody else.
And what's even more alarming is that the people that you, the statistics that you cited are the older adults, people 30, 40?
20s, 30s, 40s, predominantly. Chlamydia, particularly in the younger, like 20, 29, in that age group, are the highest risk. The diseases are a little bit different, gonorrhea, you'll see in a different age group and other factors that you see that affect them, but...
That's a mind-blowing. I would think, you know, just off the top, that this would be in the ages of 14, 13, 15 years old, and people just not, how is that, that population?
I'd have to give you a long answer to that question, Commissioner. It's just the pattern of the epidemiology of the disease. It's where the infection is. So if you think about, you know, flu outbreaks or other infectious disease outbreaks, it depends on the patterns of the behavior, it depends on the risk of the host, the immune status of the host, the environment they live in, and what the infectiousness of the agent is. And so it's similar to what we see with STDs. Once it's into a community, if it finds the right, if the germ finds, or the bug finds the right community that has the environment to propagate that germ to other hosts, then it spreads. And that's basically how it works. Why does it happen in eastern North Carolina? Why does it happen with the African-American population? Why does it happen in Pitt County? It's multifactorial. But I can guarantee that poverty also plays a role in this. And so the African-American population in poor areas of whatever county, where it's densely populated, is going to spread chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis more than they would in another place that has different characteristics.
Thank you very much. This is crisis, and something has to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
No other question. Thank you for your presentation, Doc.
Thank you.
We've got a break at this time, about a 10 minutes break, and it will be in Social Services, Jan Elliott will be coming next. We now have Jan Elliott with Social Services to give her presentation. Jan?
Okay, thank you all. I appreciate your support of our department over the last year and the last several years. Without you, we could not do what we do. And I do appreciate that support. I do want to tell you what I told my board when I did the presentation for our board. In my 46 years in doing this kind of work, this is the craziest year, the most unsettled year I think I have ever faced. And so we're just trying to figure it out as we go, because things are just in such a state of flux. And I want to tell you just a little bit about the landscape, so you can share some of my angst, and have some, you know, understanding kind of of what's going on. I do want to start about, celebrate a few of the good things that happened this year, or we think they're good things. Childcare was added to NC FAST. And y'all remember all the chaos and catastrophe that happened when NC FAST rolled out in other areas. We believe that NC FAST is rolling out pretty good in childcare. All our cases are in. The state continues to push back. The date that they're going to pay the providers for the first time out of that system, they anticipate August to be the first time they pay the providers directly from that statewide system, so we'll see how that goes. But at this point, we're feeling pretty good about where we are. So that's a plus. Medicaid transportation program was rolled into NC Trax, and that is the payment system for Medicaid services. And NC Trax has had its own issues, and this is our first month for payments coming out of NC Trax to our Medicaid providers. And there have been a few glitches, but hopefully we're overcoming those. Our food stamps, if, when I was hired, you remember all the chaos and controversy over being timely with food stamps, and over the last couple of years. Pitt County consistently is running about above 95%, which is the federal requirement for the food stamp process and timeliness. Additionally, our food stamp payment accuracy rate through the months that have been reviewed so far for the current fiscal year, we are running at 100% accurate. So North Carolina continues to struggle with accuracy. They continue to be above the federal requirements, but we are well pleased with the work that our folks are doing. As far as the Medicaid timeliness, if you all remember, there is a Medicaid report card out there now. And there were some issues about counties taking too long during the conversion for NC FAST. We are required by state law to process 90% of our food stamp, I mean, our Medicaid applications timely. And the first three months that they've issued the report card, we believe we're at 90% or above. The problem we have is they have pulled back the report card because the data's not right. So we're being held accountable for that, but right now we don't have accurate data. But based on our data and the information that's been provided thus far, we believe we're running at or above 90% in all areas. Our quality service area, which is the final bullet here, Pitt County is participating in a variety of quality service initiatives. And one of these, one example of this, is our food stamp program that we're working at the federal level. We're one of nine counties in the country working with the federal government and some of their contractors to see what we can do to improve accuracy, timeliness, all those kinds of things. And we are in the process, we've been working on this for about a year now. We're doing a lot of plan-do-study-act processes, sort of around like what you do with lean and some of those kinds of things, trying to modify and look at ways that we can actually serve clients better with less churn and all that kind of thing. So those are some of the really plus things that are going, positive things that are going on. And I do want to say that for 2017, I did not spend much time, as you can see on this discussion, about Hurricane Matthew, but that had a significant impact on our department as it did the county. So where are we with challenges in 2018 and beyond? NC FAST continues to roll out. In July, our energy programs will go into NC FAST. That will be our crisis intervention programs, and that will also be our low-income energy payments that are done during the months of December through March. So we are very hopeful that that's going to go well. We'll see how it goes. Our child welfare programs will be rolling into NC FAST for Pitt County in January. That's a real different kind of ballgame than what was going on with food stamps and Medicaid, because we're talking about lives of families and children, and so, that are different than just giving them a benefit. So we are very hopeful that this will go well. We are in the planning stages now with the state. We have folks who are working with the state in this process, so we are optimistic. There is a state program improvement plan in child welfare. The state of North Carolina failed the child welfare review by the federal government. Every state that has been through this review thus far has failed it. North Carolina met or exceeded the averages of all the other states, but we did, in fact, fail this review. And we're, the state has developed a program improvement plan, which will be being implemented in the coming months. If we fail to make progress as a state, then there is a penalty that the feds could... impose. Daycare policy, policy changes. The policy changes that occurred last year have significantly impacted our ability to deliver services. We basically now are prevented from terminating any child in daycare unless they meet the age requirements, the age limits, or the parents fail to show up to do the review. Our waiting list has grown in the last year by 1,000 more folks. We are over 1,800 children waiting for childcare. 1,200 of those are children zero to five. And we're not even scratching the surface on the children who would potentially qualify for care. So we are, are struggling really hard, as is the entire state. And as I understand it, the, the nation is seeing similar growth in their childcare waiting lists because of the changes in the regulations. APS and guardianship continue to be significant for us. We have more cases that have mental health factors which significantly complicates our work with those folks. Our increase in guardianships is, has, we've grown by about 40% in the last few years. We're now up over 105 guardianship cases in Pitt County. APS is having similar forces, our adult protective services, because many of our folks are younger with mental health issues, we're going to be involved in their lives as, if they're, if we're named their guardian, probably for 50 years or more. This is very different than the guardianships we used to do, which were typically folks my age and older who had dementia and significant healthcare needs. We're talking about a population that's 20, 30 years old and will be with us. Many of these individuals do not qualify for Medicaid if they have too much income, or they've not been declared eligible for social security yet, so they have no income. We're, we're caught in that kind of thing. And if they have, if they're not qualified for social security, they're not qualified for Medicaid. Once we've been made responsible by the courts for these folks, we are responsible to ensure that they have their essential needs met and that they are safe. And so trying to fund those kinds of services because there are no federal or state dollars to support those kinds of services creates significant problems for us. And some counties are already budgeting as much as $90,000 a year in county dollars to support these kinds of services for these individuals. So then we move to the national level. That's just some of the local stuff. In the fiscal year 18 budget, that is, you know, hopefully something will be done on it in October, when that, when it has to be done. There is talk at the federal level of block granting Medicaid and food stamps. That would mean if that happens, of course, that the states would get a lump sum of money, and then they would need to cover the folks that they are supposed to, that they choose to cover. Will that increase in dollars if there's a downturn in the economy? Typically with the block grants, that doesn't happen. So we are just, you know, sort of sitting here going, what is going to happen with these programs? If they don't block grant, one of the other options that's out there that's being talked about is capitating the Medicaid payment rate per person. I think that kind of happens maybe with HMOs and some of those kinds of things. You get a certain amount of money to serve that person, and, you know, you got to figure out how to do that. We don't know a whole lot about how that's going to be put together, and if there'll be rates based on age or diagnosis that would be different. I mean, taking care of your average three-year-old is real different than taking care of someone in long-term care, the cost figures and that kind of thing. So we're trying to watch that very closely and see what happens. The capitation rate, if it happens, would happen effective October of 2019, as we understand it. And then most of the Medicaid things that are out there now, we don't know what's going to happen with the administrative changes that are around administering those programs and what the costs will be and the impacts, what the reimbursement rates will be for determining eligibility, for example. Work requirements, there is in many of the Medicaid programs now at the national level, some discussion about requiring able-bodied adults who are getting Medicaid to work. So that will mean that somebody will have to work on putting something together for those folks. And then there's the ACA versus the AHCA, the American Healthcare Act. We don't know, based on what happens, how that's going to have an impact on our qualifications for Medicaid. When ACA came about, the Affordable Care Act, that changed a lot of the ways we did budgeting for folks. And so that increased some of the responsibility on our staff. Again, don't know how any of this is going to play out. So again, constantly watching and trying to see what's going to happen in the future and trying to crystal ball and think how we need to be positioned is very difficult. There are several possible funding eliminations that have been proposed in the upcoming budget year at the federal level, one of which is the Low Income Energy Assistance Funds. And in Pitt County, that's about $1.6 million that comes in to fund those kinds of services. We provide heating assistance during the winter months, and then we provide heating and cooling assistance in emergency situations during the winter and summer months. So if that fund is eliminated, you know, that will create a significant issue for our citizens. The Social Services block grant has been on the chopping block for several years. It continues to be on the potential chopping block. Again, in Pitt County, that's a significant sum of money, and that is money that provides for the administration of our aging services, so our social workers and adult services, APS, guardianship. It also provides funds for some of our child welfare services. If they eliminate that program, you know, there, there will be an impact. The TANF program is up for discussion again, as I understand it, this fall. It has been approved for the rest of this fiscal year. The TANF program is the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. That program pays, 37% of that program goes to fund our child welfare services in the state of North Carolina. It also funds a lot of our childcare services. And clearly, it was adopted because of the work requirements. This is the old, this is what in North Carolina is known as work first, and that's what funds that program. But because of some of the connections, it also funds other things that I already mentioned.
Excuse me, what was the first thing you said that it funded before childcare?
TANF funds, 37% of the TANF monies in North Carolina go to support child welfare services. And then it also supports childcare services.
Okay, child welfare. Thank you.
Yeah, all those child things. Yeah. I was at a recent, well, I wasn't, but a group of directors and national leaders and state leaders were at a recent conference where this, where Secretary Price spoke. And one of his, he's the Health and Human Services Secretary, and one of his statements is that nationally, they will need to rely more on state and local governments to address health and local needs. So you just need to be aware that that is the landscape. I don't know what that, I, I can guess what that means, but with the potential eliminations we're talking about and the block granting of things, I think a lot of things probably are going to be pushed down to the, to the state and locals to, to fund if we wish to continue to receive those services. Now, as I move into the state unknowns, I've been spending a lot of time, as have many of you, if you went to Raleigh for the legislative day, on the Senate Bill 594, House Bill 608, which is the Child Welfare Improvement Bill. It was rolled into the Senate budget. It did not actually get much hearing in the Senate. It was rolled straight into the budget. The Child Welfare Improvement Bill, the first section of that speaks to regionalizing social services departments from 100 counties to 30 counties, or 30 departments. That's a significant change in the way we do business. It's a significant change in the way we've done business over the years. Certainly, we are very concerned about that particular piece of the legislation. The rest of it, we're pretty good with, but that particular piece is very concerning. If we are regionalized, it would be all programs, so you would have one department covering multiple counties. Funding would be done by those counties. You know, you'd develop a budget, you'd go to all the commissioners to get the money, similar to what I'm sure you do now with the LMEs and, and those kinds of folks. They're talking that a maximum of four counties could be lumped together into one region, but there will be no more than 30. The bill does not authorize study or anything like that. The bill says that this will be done, and we're going to form a study group about how it shall be done. So the first thing that our board did and submitted was a resolution to the legislature asking that we support a study that includes all of the stakeholders to determine if regionalization is in fact a good thing to do. Because regionalization has not been done elsewhere. The few states that have, have thought about it backed off. So we're, we're not really sure that is the best plan. I mean, think about for us, for example, we're in a single court district. If we added additional counties, they'd be different court districts. Well, I'm trying to be in court for child welfare, child support, aging services. I've got multiple courts. I mean, it, it, that's just one example of some of the chaos. So we have sent copies of our, and you have a copy of our resolution in front of you to our delegation, along with some information about the impacts and how, right now, North Carolina is performing. But in this, in the bill, the, it's, in the presentation, it was specifically said that, you know, it's too hard to work with 100 folks, we need to reduce it to 30. So that's kind of the driving impetus, as far as I know for that. The Directors Association, on May the 11th, did adopt a resolution against mandatory regionalization. And we, that is being submitted throughout all the, the legislative delegation, also trying to work specifically in the House a lot. The, we have given, the Senator, Senator Beringer has offered the opportunity for us to do a bill markup, which we did do and have submitted to her, that speaks to voluntary regionalization and speaks to situations where counties are in trouble. Perhaps that might be an opportunity to do regionalization, but do not make it as a mandatory kind of thing. Don't know where that stands with her. I do know the Commissioners Association is working on how they propose to move forward from their perspective. I know we all have some concerns about what this might mean. So that's one of the big unknowns. This, the whole process will take until 2022 to fully implement if this bill passes. But beginning immediately, the, the activities would have to start. And this would be while we're trying to work through the Program Improvement Plan. This would be while we're trying to implement NC FAST. There are all kinds of moving parts going on right now. So, so that is of a concern to us. Other state unknowns, there is Senate Bill 422. It removes categorical eligibility for food stamps. There, it's gotten a lot of media coverage in the last 24 hours. But basically, this would cut about 133,000 people from the food stamp rolls in, in North Carolina. About 51,000 of those folks are children. And the categorical eligibility means these folks get some other public assistance program, so they are automatically eligible for food stamps without having to go through as much work as, as we would normally. This is an optional service at the federal level, but North Carolina and a lot of states during the recession found that this was an option they should take because it would assist more families. And, and so clearly, this has a potential for increasing the error rate. It would definitely increase our workload at the local level if we are having to do individual eligibility determinations, because the process will be more complicated. There's also some child support requirements in this bill, which may increase the workload there. The bill also requires quarterly reviews in Medicaid, so also a, an additional workload issue for staff. And I can tell you that Pitt's workload already is very high compared to other counties. We're served, we, our, our workers have about 1,100 cases per worker that they're working, and most counties are 700 or so. So we, our folks do a lot with what they're already doing. So this, this again is now in the Senate budget, and we certainly, as the directors, are trying to work with folks to talk about the impacts of this. I do not know where this will go. And this would be affected, affected fairly quickly. Another bill is Senate Bill 546. This has also got rolled into the Senate budget without any hearing. It is a response to the state audit that was done last year of 10 counties by the state auditor. It says that all 100 counties will be audited annually. There will have to be accuracy standards established. Right now, there are none. There would have to be a corrective action plan established in counties that are having difficulties. There is a state takeover provision in this bill, as there is in the child welfare bill and as there already is in the Medicaid process and bills. So state takeover is, is becoming more and more something that the state's going to in the legislature. The county becomes responsible for errors and any associated cost, both at the federal and state participation rate. And then finally, there's a, a training component for all those that are using NC FAST, which is, which is a good thing. The biggest concern that all of us have, and that I suspect you as county commissioners will have, is the financial impact of the errors. The state is asking us to pay the full cost of any error unless it is a state responsible error. Senator Heiss, who introduced this bill, has stated that he wants the counties to have some skin in the game, because right now, we don't pay the Medicaid cost anymore. If we miss something in an adult case, for example, and approve them an error, the potential cost to the county could be huge. Think about a long-term care case who was incorrectly determined eligible because somebody did not give us information about an insurance policy. We might be potentially liable for that entire cost of care and any medical services they receive during that 12 months of eligibility. Worse, suppose they had a lung transplant during their period of eligibility. Second, we at, at the directors are working to try and develop some substitute language for this bill to try and limit the liability and require that any dollars that we are required to pay would be reinvested in the county to improve the accuracy of that county's eligibility determination process, if in fact that is the issue. We, we are suggesting, and I don't know if it's going to fly with my peers, but the group that's working on this is suggesting a maximum of $5,000 or 5% would be the limit, whichever is less, that the county might be responsible for. Our first thought was to say, no, the county should have no responsibility. But based on the senator's concerns, we weren't sure that was going to fly. So I, I don't know where this is going, but it is definitely an issue to be worried about. The other thing we're asking for is that there be the opportunity to appeal the decision and the opportunity for a county to ask for a waiver based on some extenuating circumstances, perhaps, in their county. So again, those are just some of the things that we've talked about, that we're going to try and get inserted into the language, and we'll just have to see where it goes. But that's something that certainly needs to be on the commissioner's radar, and I'm sure it is at the state level. Will the Medicaid expansion bill pass? There are several Medicaid expansion bills out there. I suspect none of them will pass, but if any do, House Bill 662, which was introduced by Representative Murphy, Carolina Cares, seems to be the most likely to survive. No estimate yet of potential numbers, but the bill talks about adults 19 to 64 at 133% of poverty. The agency obviously would be the ones that would need to establish eligibility, which is, it's an increase in workload. But certainly for those who have no insurance, it would certainly be an important thing for them to have. And this bill also has a work requirement, that if you are able to work, that you would work towards, we would work with you towards finding employment. So there are some costs to the county with this, even though the actual Medicaid itself would, would not have a cost to the county. Don't know if that will, will pass. There is another bill out there that we suspect won't pass, but there is a strong lobby to have this done, and that is in House Bill 513, which is State-City Special Assistance Rate. They're proposing increasing it to, by $165 a month, and 50% of that is county-only money. That was not factored into our budget because it was done prior, after our budget proposal was put forward. That would be about $350,000 for Pitt County if it did pass. But again, we're not thinking it will pass, and the reason we're thinking it will not pass is there is some sense in the legislature that if we increase, and they're right, if you increase the special assistance rate, that increases the number of people eligible for Medicaid. And they do not want to increase the number of people eligible for Medicaid. So, so that, that should be an interesting discussion as it goes forward at the legislature. So now we start talking about our budget, which is what you wanted to hear about this morning. But I did think you needed to have some sense of kind of all the stuff that's out there floating around and, and how we're kind of trying to be on our toes all the time. and how we're kind of trying to be on our toes all the time. Our total budget in Pitt County is $324 million. Of that, 71% is federal money. The county pays a total of 3% of the total budget that our agency operates from. And this flows right into some of the conversation that we were having this morning with Dr. Morrow. Poverty. I was in a meeting not too long ago, and G.K. Butterfield mentioned that Pitt County was a persistent poverty county. So, I went out and started looking at that. And of the 3,143 counties in this country, there are 353 persistent poverty counties. And persistent poverty is defined as 20% or more over a period of 30 years. Pitt County is one of those 353 counties. More importantly, in my mind, is that there's also a persistent child poverty county list. There are 708 persistent child poverty counties, and Pitt is one of those also. Pitt has the distinction of being the, and it's not a good distinction, of being the only metro county in North Carolina to have both designations. I say this to y'all for many reasons. One, Pitt County has a lot of issues that bring people to my doors, and poverty is probably the number-one driver. And I know Mr. Garrus not too long ago asked me about how our poverty rate that had been as high as 50%. We have been moving in the right direction, but right this minute, we're still at 23.4% based on the last statistics. We have a wage gap in Pitt County. 17.2% of our female workers in Pitt County earn less than $25,000 a year. Now, a lot of those are single moms. I mean, their folks are out there working, but they can't get out of poverty. And poverty is a driver. Having skills and having childcare can help mothers particularly rise out of poverty. And so, we've got to do a lot more work there, and that's why my childcare budget distresses me greatly. So, let's talk about the economic impact in Pitt County. We are paying around $230 million projected to the Medicaid, medical providers here in Pitt County this year. So, that's a significant impact to the hospital and all the providers. Our grocery stores are going to receive close to $52 million in payments projected this year through the food stamp program. And so, we have a significant impact, particularly on a lot of the mom and pops. And I know grocery stores are springing up in Pitt County. We're adding a lot of grocery stores. So, this is an important economic piece for Pitt County. As I indicated earlier, childcare, we're going to be close to $10 million this coming year in paying childcare payments. And even then, we're not, we're not serving all the kids we need to serve. We serve about 15.76% of the potentially eligible population in childcare. And we pay for about 40 to 50% of the slots in centers who accept subsidy dollars. There are centers that do not accept subsidy dollars, some of the church centers and those kinds of folks. Child support payments, we're, and this is, you know, this is stuff that we're doing with absent parents. We are on target to exceed 15 million in the coming, in this fiscal year. So, that will be an even bigger figure next year. So, now about our budget request. And let's talk a little bit about our expenditures from last year to this year. It appears our expenditures are, were projected, and we're using what I requested, not what the manager approved. Need to make that clear. Thus, the expenditures are projected to go up 1.9 million. A lot of that is covered by federal money. That's about a 5.3% increase over last year. Our revenues are projected to increase by a little over 2 million, which is 8.25% increase in the revenues. And that, of course, would offset the spending. The county dollars are expected to increase by $251,885 or a 2.52% increase if you accept any of my recommendations. We asked for six positions in our budget this year. The manager approved none. And I understand where he's coming from, and he understands where I'm coming from. So, it's a discussion we need to have. In our Children's Services Division, we have asked for a Child Protective Services Supervisor. The county cost to that is $29,472. Our supervisors, it's a child safety issue. Our supervisors right now are exceeding the state standard. We are supervising seven staff per supervisor, plus our, plus the interns we have. Access to a supervisor, timely oversight, follow-up with those workers can certainly reduce the likelihood of further injury to children that we are dealing with that are in child protective services investigations. We have 11, 1,200 investigations going on during a year. Because of Vida, we do a lot of initiations for other counties because the children wind up at Vida. There's, there's a lot of work going on. A lot of our staff are fairly new. They're fairly young staff. But we need to be working with those workers and reviewing those cases with them. There's a requirement for a two-party case decision already. And one of our staff, during a recent review with the state, pointed out that he has seven people that he supervises. He's able to get to five per week in looking at their cases. So, two are always carried over. There's, there's two that are not getting the supervision that they need just based on there's not enough hours in the day. So, it is certainly an important issue, and it is a safety issue for our children that we are involved with. The second position we are asking for is a foster care licensing social worker, too. And during our initial presentation to the manager, we did a rough estimate of the cost. So, at that point, it appeared to be some cost. But in narrowing things down and actually running through the entire process, if we limit this person to doing nothing but licensing of foster homes, this position would be 100% funded by the federal government. And because of where we are with foster care, we certainly have already said to staff, this person can do nothing else. And what happens is you forget, a lot of children coming into care, and you don't have enough workers. You shift workers wherever you can to cover that. And as a result, our foster care licensing program has not done well this year. We are behind because we have had some vacancies. And we've had a significant number of children coming into care. We are also having to work with other counties and states to complete studies in this particular program area. And so, that's added to our problems. I have a three-page letter from one of our potential foster parents. He went to the classes back in November. And some of his statements I'm going to share with you. "Many families have given up fostering with Pitt County DSS and sought other routes, working with private agencies. These are wonderful families who would have been some of your best foster parents, and they were lost. The entire CPS system cannot work without foster families. If you don't have anywhere to place children, you can't take them out of their injurious environments. We're doing this because we want to, not because we have to. This is a situation of many foster families and many of the families you've lost and are set to lose. It also appears to be due in large part to a lack of personnel." So, we've got to get a lot of things right. We've got to have the personnel to do this, and we've got to dedicate somebody full-time to this job and not allow them to do other services, no matter how desperate we are. The third position in our Services Division, this is also in child welfare. Last year, effective January 1 of this year, but last year during the budget cycle at the legislature, a bill was introduced and passed that allowed us to work with our foster children once they turn 18 until they turn 21, just like you work with your children. Between that period of 18 to 21, they still need support services. They still need somebody to call on, those kinds of things. As opposed to foster care where we pretty much said, 18, hi, goodbye, have a good life. It was not having good outcomes for these youth. So, the state did approve that North Carolina would begin serving children in the 18- to 21-year range. And they said that they would pick up all the cost, well, they are picking up all the cost, of any dollars we spend on their behalf, but not the staff cost. And we in Pitt County are pretty much leading the state with the number of children because we've had such a good relationship with our children, and coming back in and wanting to be part of this program. Right now, we have 18 young adults, 13 are Pitt County children or young adults. The remaining are children who are attending school here from another, but they were another county's foster child, and so, we're sort of helping monitor with them. These cases require us to go to court with these children. We're required to have contact with these children. We're required to be available with these young adults. I call them children, but they're young adults. And so, this is certainly adding to our workload. And so, we did ask for a position that would cost the county $25,742. We already have an increased caseload in foster care, as you will see by our next slide. I came in July of 2014, guys, it's almost three years. And we have had just tremendous increase in the foster care caseload. We served 210 children in 2016. The dates you see here, that's the ending, at the ending of the year of what our caseload was. We have not added new positions in this area. So, not only are we having more children come into care in general, we have, we have added the 18- to 21-year-old population. All right. Two of our staff requests were in our Family Support Services Division. They are child support agents. They work very closely to try and make sure that absent parents are paying child support. The cost of these positions, $5,125 for one of them and $7,848 for the other. We lost two positions in county, in the county budget during the economic downturn in child support. We have not replaced those positions, and this would do that. Our child support caseload has grown by 1,783 since 2011. Our cases under order have dropped from 88.86% to 86.09% over a period of four years. We're coming dangerously close to missing the federal benchmarks. Staff have done an admirable job. At a certain point, you can only do so much with what you got. We've done some automation, and we've looked at how we're doing business. At some point, we, we just had to go back and ask for these positions. We've got a couple of other slides to give you a sense of what is going on here. You can see that on our cases going to court, we should be seeing these numbers grow because of the size of the caseload. But in fact, our numbers are decreasing in the cases going to court. Same thing with paternities being established. And we can't even begin the process until paternity has been established or until someone says, signs that they are the father or the mother. Those numbers have decreased also. And if we are in fact, going to start taking daycare cases to child support and food stamp cases, that will even increase the workload more. But I'm not asking for positions there. From that perspective, I'm asking because the caseloads have increased and we are at the point we need to move forward. The county does get incentive dollars if they meet the state and federal benchmarks. And those dollars are reinvested in the child support program. We pay for our deputies that way. We pay for other kinds of services that way that benefit the child support program. We could not use those dollars for these two positions because this is just bringing us back to where we were. Otherwise, these positions would not cost you anything. The final position I am requesting is the economic supports, in the Economic Support Services area. That is our foreign language interpreter. We have two interpreters right now. The county cost for this is $22,000. We've had to use contract interpreters at the rate of $50 an hour. Our customer service, we have sometimes longer waits because folks can't get seen because they need the interpreter. We do a lot of interpreting services with folks who call into the agency and can't speak the language. Where we really run into trouble, too, is when any of our interpreters are out, that leaves one interpreter. They are both at the Economic Services Building over, across the river, but they also provide interpreting services in our child welfare programs. So, we have, have requested that position for the coming year. The final thing we requested, and the manager and I discussed it, and we reduced that figure to $30,000. This used to be covered a lot when we had a lot more general assistance money. That was how we used to cover these unmet needs for seniors. Our general assistance monies at one point were around $100,000. Right now, we're at about $25,000. But this does at least allow us to know exactly what's happening with this because we can track it because it is targeted to the unmet needs folks. At the beginning of my presentation, I did mention the problem we're having with those that we're serving in APS and Guardians. Counties are beginning to have to cover, we're seeing so much with medical, medical issues, needing to cover medicines, payments to facilities. In the first six months of this year, we spent $15,000 covering these needs for folks. We have several additional folks for whom there is not money to pay for their care right now, but we are having to place them. We are required, because we are their custodian, their guardian, to be responsible and to ensure they're safe and have their essential needs met once that court action occurs. And I can tell you about a couple of them. We've got one gentleman who has $1,700 a month in income. That's way too much to pay, to be eligible for Medicaid, okay? But he's in his 80s. He's now got to go into, he can take care of himself pretty good, but he's got dementia. He needs some supervision. And the assisted living facility is going to charge us about $3,000 a month to care for this guy. He's only got $1,700 in income, and he's not going to qualify for Medicaid either. So, right now, he's got $10,000 in savings that he will be able to cover his care for a little while. But when that's gone, he's got to stay in care. If he's still alive, he's got to stay in care. How is that going to happen? Family is not involved. We are his guardian. So, that's just an example. And because he's not eligible for Medicaid, Medicare will pick up some of his expenses, but there'll probably be some medical expenses we'll need to pick up, too. So, that's just an example of one of the situations we find ourselves in. Those were the big things in our budget this year. And I am available for questions.
Thank you very much, Jan, for that presentation, and have questions from our Commissioners.
Jan, that Senate Bill 594, at the regional meeting, we were discussing asking the legisla- they funded that bill, it passed, Senate Bill 594. Is the relation, it seems to me that that portion that you were talking about as it relates to children and protective services, that is directly related to that, that you're talking about in this budget. Is that correct?
We don't have anything in this budget related to that bill, okay? The servant, the demands that are placed on us, one of the, you know, one of the reasons that the Senator felt that this bill needed to be introduced is she feels that the system is broken and that counties are not doing what they need to be doing, that they have not stepped up to do what they need to do. And so, certainly, benchmarks and all those kinds of things are going to be placed on us and already are. Pitt County is one of the counties that's in a pilot where we have benchmarks that the state is tracking to see how we're doing. So, but all counties will have those based on this bill. And those are fine things. We need to be measuring and knowing where we are. Certainly, the positions I asked for aren't directly related to that bill, but not having those positions will, creates the potential for us to have more and more problems, which then feeds into her concerns.
That's because I was looking at it in that way. No, we've asked the legis-, the Regional Association has asked that they pull certain things out of that bill. I've sent you the letters to pull it before they actually put it into effect.
Well, our association is continuing to work with Senator Behringer, who was the primary mover of this bill. But we're also trying to work with the House. Since it was dropped into the Senate budget bill, it kind of left us in a quandary there. So, we've moved to the House. But we are continuing to work with the Senator to see if we can get any, any assistance in moving some of the changes in there. Again, much of that bill we support. It is just the concern about the regionalization and the impact on the fact that it is the entire county social service, is not just child welfare. So, and I will say to you, studies, the dollar figures, the county- the counties have increased their support for child welfare services by forty-some percent over the last several years as the feds have reduced their dollars. The state has increased their spending by about four percent. Uh, so the counties, again, are are finding themselves picking up more and more of the responsibility for things.
That's that's the part that I wanted this board to know that we talked about in that particular meeting. And we can't see how the county can continue picking up things, uh, what they're calling them unfunded mandates. But um, one of the problems that I see is that if it's not broken completely, they are fixing it, just like they did with mental health. And if if this happens uh in the future, and we don't know how far in the future, we'll be right in the same part that we are with mental health right now, which is in a quas-mi. So, um, I don't know how we're gonna address everything, but we certainly gotta take it in consideration.
And I forgot to introduce Angela Hart, who is the person who runs all these numbers for me and is my clicker.
Mr. Huggett?
Uh, Jan, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to page two, where you talk about the um the national unknowns, uh, the block grants and food stamps and the Medicaid capitation and all that. Uh, have you thought about uh how this would impact your employee caseload? Have you thought about how that, all of these changes?
It's, that's one of the things we try to struggle with to try and figure that out. Until you know more about what they're planning, it's hard to determine. I mean, it could significantly reduce the number of people we're serving, which would mean I might not need as many staff. It could conceivably require more requirements and more hoops to jump through in order to get services, which would mean I might need more staff. I mean, until you see kind of what the details, the devil is in the details. Until you see those details, it's, we can, we can guess and make some projections and try to think about different options and what we might do. But until you see those details, it's kind of tough.
Okay. Uh, another question. With the the resolution that you you passed out to us, uh, would you, uh, would it help for this uh board to uh write us resolution in support of your resolution?
Well, you know, I know the Commissioners Association is is working on this and I don't know where the Commissioners Association is with their plans as far as any resolutions. Certainly, more resolutions are better than less resolutions, I would think. I don't know that you necessarily want to do the resolution our board did because our board did the resolution before um the Directors Association and others had come out saying, no mandatory. We were talking study. Uh, we are now at no mandatory. Um, and so you may want to have that discussion and I'll be glad to participate in any discussion you want to have about that uh to try and and think about uh what might be the appropriate resolution and if y'all want to do a resolution.
Uh, my other question is, uh, you're asking for a sixth position. Uh, the manager has recommended none.
Right.
Do you have a compromise? And if you do, uh, would you be willing to prioritize?
Right, right, right. Yeah, and I thought about that and and we've talked about that a little bit. Clearly, the three positions that would cost you almost zero would and and would have some impact would be my top priorities. The social worker two position licensing foster care, uh, which has a zero cost to it as far as salary and fringe benefits, et cetera, would be my number one priority. I think getting those child support agents, the total cost of that is less than thirteen thousand dollars for the two positions together would be my next priority. Beyond that, obviously, the if I had to prioritize, the interpreter would be my last priority. Uh, clearly, I think we need the supervisor. I'm just really concerned about the safety of our children. Uh, and that oversight is just critical. But but those would kind of be my my priorities.
If I can interject, on the page twelve, on the social worker position that is now identified as zero cost, we would be in agreement to having that in there. At the time, it was a sixty forty split, forty percent general fund. That's why it was not um recommended. So, no issue on that individual position.
And I think my final uh question or concern would be, uh, you talked about poverty and the economic impact. Uh, we we see uh the uh, a lot of fast foods, um, companies going up, restaurants going up. And yes, people do get those jobs, but they're having to work uh more because they don't get forty hours, you know? So they're having to work two and three jobs. Uh, so what we always say is that what our people need, uh, we need livable wages, you know? And and that's not what what we're getting. Uh, so therefore, uh, they are still falling in that poverty uh category. Uh, so I have some concern about the care, uh, HB six-six-two, which is Carolina Care. Uh, and you said maybe it will.
It's the closest thing that might pass.
Might pass. But uh, my concern uh is the eligibility. What what would the eligibility look like? And the work requirements. Uh, that would also impact your your caseload too.
It will.
But but I I'm concerned what 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 that would look like for uh for the clients. You have any idea on that?
Well, a hundred and thirty-three percent of poverty for a single person is something in the neighborhood. I'm I'm guessing right now, I I usually look at it as a family of three or four and that's like twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars so a year. So for a single person, uh, that would be a much lower figure, probably twelve or so thousand dollars a year and then thirteen, something like that in income. And and and, you know, we we are already working, thanks to to this board, uh, working with our food stamp recipients around, trying to help them get to skill up and to to get jobs, be it on-the-job training, be it going to community college. Uh, any any of them who who want to work with us, we are ready and 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 able to try and help them do that and have lots of partnerships uh with the community to do that. We also do that with our workforce population. So, it, you know, we we are ready to do whatever folks request as it relates to to helping folks get jobs. Um, and and right now, we're working on a a really significant project project in our food stamp area uh that will draw down some additional federal dollars for some of our agencies in the community that are providing employment services. They would, they would put up fifty percent of the match for our food stamp recipients and be able to draw down fifty percent federal funding to offset their cost. So, um, you know, yes, we have a lot of service jobs. We have a lot of low-entry wages. Uh, our goal would be to, one, teach people how to get a job and how to keep a job 'cause that is one of the big issues. And then the second issue is the skill-up piece. But I don't care how hard you work at it, if you don't have childcare, you're kind of, you're kind of in a in a bind anyway. And I know a lot of the folks that work fast food and work grocery stores and those kinds of things that make, you know, between seven, se- minimum wage and eight, eight-fifty. Uh, their childcare is really interesting because they don't work the same shift every day. So they've got childcare going all over the place. So they've got to have full-time childcare, part-time child, family members. It's just really difficult. So, yeah, so there's a lot of things that we've got to get in the right place.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up with the, I'm not sure I understood. I did understand that we're adding back in the zero cost.
Right.
But what were the next two that she mentioned and what was the cost of that together?
The two child support agents together are less than thirteen thousand dollars.
One was fifty, one hundred, one was seventy, eight hundred.
But our cost would be?
That's our cost. That's the county cost.
Thirteen thousand for both.
Both, uh-huh, total.
Okay, so I'd I'd like to see that considered also. Thank you.
Any other questions?
As have I, as I have done previously and before many times, I want to congratulate you and your board and your staff for a job well done.
Thank you, sir.
But it's a little hard for me to sit here and want to uh spend taxpayers' money to support a budget which is three-hundred-and-twenty-four million dollars, which is almost as much as the total county budget. But uh, thank you for the job well done.
That's true, thank you.
Fifty percent more.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir?
It's fifty percent more.
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Medicaid's the driver of that, so, yeah.
Yeah, as we work through all these uh budget proposals, I'm noticing a theme as it uh manifests from Raleigh, that we are in every single county department taking on more and more responsibility. That is the statutory or constitutional responsibility of the state of North Carolina. And we are being used as an independent funding source so that other political figures can say they cut taxes and have a surplus. Meanwhile, we're being continually painted into a corner and the villains uh to fund these things. Just looking at the four million dollars from the uh teachers and administrators, we could give the sheriff the six people he's asking for, plus some cars. We could give you the people you were asking for. We could give the school system what they were asking for and still have almost a million dollars to put back in our fund balance. That's not even counting the clerical. If you figure the clerical on, let's say, an average of thirty thousand dollars a year, which I assume they're making, that's another four-point-two million dollars. That's eight million dollars of what what is our ad valorem, about ninety million? So just under ten percent of our income or tax revenues for this county that are meant to go directly back into this county are being eaten up by covering state responsibilities that they are advocating and pretending like they're doing their job. And that is very frustrating. And then when we look at the Senate bill to where they would remove governance from the very place that's funding the institutions they're demanding that we run, uh, what happens to our employees if we regionalize? They then become the employees of the regional board that are then, but are funded by us. And at the same time, the dollars that are raised by this county will be under the influence of people from other counties who aren't paying the bulk of it. And I would imagine in our region, Pitt County would be the largest contributor of funds to a regional board but only have one representative on that board. And if we learned anything from mental health, we know that they will quickly remove county commissioners from the regional authority. And I I've said it before, but if you like the way mental health has gone, you'll love this because it is more of the same. And like I said earlier, I realize that they have a tough job, but we don't have an easy one either. And I think what we're asking is to do their job and to, you know, tax cuts are great. I love them. But, you know, fund your responsibilities before you talk about a tax cut. And uh, and so my concerns about our employees, what happens to them? And I have a really, really tough time with five forty-six, hearing from a senator that wants the counties to have skin in the game.
Ask attorneys.
I I think we're about skinned alive just trying to cover them. And this is just one county out of a hundred. And this is happening all across this state. And I I mean, I'm, I'm not on anyone's team. I'm on Pitt County's team. And if they're not doing what they're supposed to do in Raleigh, they need to hear about it. And I will say, our our representatives are good. They listen to us. They're very um amenable to counties. So I'm not necessarily talking about them, but there's a whole lot more of them up there. And unfortunately, the main few that make the decisions live about three hours west of us and aren't very concerned with what happens east of ninety-five. And I think most of them think the ocean hits I ninety-five at high tide. And that is just not the case. And I I just, after six years of this, it it's tough to deal with. It's a very large pill to swallow when I have to run into everybody at the grocery store and they say, well, why are you considering raising taxes? Well, call Raleigh, use a nine-one-nine area code because that's where the problem lies. It's not in the two-five-two area code. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Glenn, the pairing of that regional board and the hem region is that the biggest county will will be in it and then they put the smaller ones around it with the big. It it, there is a little formula in there as to how they're gonna formulate and which means we will be the burden county.
Exactly. And but I also want to point out in that, that the ten top population counties will be their own region.
Yes.
So, starting with number eleven, of which we are number twelve, we will be responsible. So you, when you're talking about thirty regions, and you know, that sounds like about three-point-three, you know, a region. But really, you've got ninety counties that have to fit into twenty regions. And then they have no plan for how they're gonna deal with counties who have done uh human services consolidation, which we fought for very hard in two thousand twelve to give counties flexibility and the needed flexibility to actually run their counties because they may not realize this, but that nine of us know a lot more about how to run this county and the needs of this county than the hundred-and-seventy-something of them sitting on Jones Street. And so they don't even have a plan for how they're gonna deal with that. And then are they gonna divide those up? Uh, you know, they they just don't have a plan. And but the one thing they do plan to do is not pay for it.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a statement. For years, I I have been saying, Glenn's been saying, I'm glad to see that other people are starting to see this. Raleigh's not necessarily our friend. They don't act in our specific best interest. And you know what really surprised me about that? Is probably a majority of those that are up there served it as county commissioners somewhere across this state. And somehow they get up there and they take a stupid pill or a forget pill. And but the big problem for us, we don't have any positions in the leadership.
This this department had brought out more comments than any other.
I want to thank you, uh, Jan, for your final presentation and on this resolution, certainly, uh, we're gonna be looking to uh at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners in terms of the way that they are gonna be going and and then in supporting uh looking into this in a finalization. So thank you again for your presentation.
My understanding is the donkey bill in the House will be done by June.
Thank you very much. We'll now have the convention and visitor bureau, Andrew, if you would. Thank you.
This one's gonna be good. Maybe this one will be so gloomy.
I've got a presentation and some little load that or, okay? Hello, good morning. Um, I'm Andrew Schmidt. I'm the executive director of the Greenville-Pitt County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I appreciate the opportunity to um talk with you guys this morning about our budget. Maybe a little less complicated than uh than the last one. Um, and with all the issues in Raleigh. Um, but just as a reminder, what we do, um, our mission is to create a positive travel and tourism experience for those visitors that come into Greenville-Pitt County, um, whether they come in for a ball tournament or convention or meeting, family reunion, leisure travel, doesn't matter. We want to make sure that they come to Pitt County, have a very positive experience, experience maybe something they couldn't somewhere else, and then go back and share that experience. And it's very easy to do that. Uh, and with today's technology, you can, you can share it live if you want to share it live with Facebook or you can Instagram it, whatever it might be. Uh, but we want those to be positive experiences. Um, we obviously want to create a positive economic impact for Pitt County too. Bring those people in from outside, have them spend money in our hotels, our restaurants, our shops and so forth, and help our economy as well. Uh, the budget that uh we have set before you to consider has basically five strategic goals and I want to share this very quickly with you. Um, goal one, with our funding, we obviously want to increase convention sales and citywide conferences. We have a great convention center. We have a lot of wonderful uh non-hotel meeting facilities around Greenville and Pitt County. Uh, we just had a great conference in March, the Visit NC three-sixty-five conference, where the Our State Magazine event was held at Grimesland Plantation, and that was a huge success. So we want to make sure that we're bringing people here for conventions and meetings so they can create that positive economic impact. With two goals in mind, the micro goal is the economic impact that's generated, the funds that come in. Uh, but the macro goal is just as important to me as the director of the C V B, and that's to get people exposed to what's going on in Pitt County. Uh, Pitt County is growing uh at a very good rate. And people that further west you go, they have a kind of a skewed perception of what Greenville-Pitt County is all about. So we want to expose people to our venues and our facilities and our our people. Um, so that's important too. A lot of first-time conventions and meetings coming. Um, sports tournaments is always a- lot of first-time conventions and meetings coming. Sports tournaments is always a big issue for us. We want to bring as many tournaments to Greenville and Pitt County as we can. Tournaments bring a lot of economic impact. They bring support travelers, mom, dad, uncle, aunt, grandma, grandpa, brother, sister. They come and watch those ball tournaments. So, it's more money into the local economy. And Greenville and Pitt County have wonderful facilities. We'd love to see more sometime in the future. But last year, we brought in 57 tournaments with an economic impact of $6.3 million. So, we know that that's a good market for us. We want to be a more recognizable entity throughout our community, throughout Pitt County. Especially, we're going to be working hard this next fiscal year to shore up our relationships with our smaller towns outside of Greenville. They all have something to offer. And for instance, we're going to meet with Farmville next week and talk with those folks, how can we partner to bring people to the new glass-blowing studio that's in Farmville? I think that's a huge thing that we could utilize sometime in the future to bring tourism to Farmville. We also want people to understand the importance of tourism and the what it does for the economy. Develop positive relationships with our media, and not necessarily, we want to have positive relationships with our media here at home, but we're making efforts in our budget next year to go outside of Pitt County and make sure that we have media relationships with those travel writers and other media that can write stories about us. We have in our funds set aside to go to media missions with the state of North Carolina in New York City, Washington DC, Atlanta, and Charlotte, so we can start reaching out to travel writers and get them interested in writing stories about barbecue that have, you know, maybe if we get a 10-page story in Southern Living, that's a reciprocal value of almost $600,000 of add value. So, those are things that we want to do. And then, also, increase leisure travel. We need to increase leisure travel. We want to be a well-rounded community. We've got conventions and meeting space. We've got the sports tourism going on. We want to be well-rounded, use our culture, use our arts, use our history to bring in for more leisure travel to our community. So, that's important as well. Just a quick review of where we've been and where we're going. Positive trends for Greenville-Pitt County for tourism. 2011, tourism generated $194 million into our local economy. Five years later, we're at $219 million. So, you can see a nice, steady growth of tourism coming into Greenville and Pitt County. And that's important because each person that lives in Pitt County saves $92.47 off their taxes. If that tourism money had not come into our community, they would pay $92.47 more in taxes. So, we want to make sure that individuals that live in Greenville and Pitt County understand that when those tourism dollars come in, that reduces their taxes, it helps the economy, and so forth. Our budget was crafted with the help of our board. We have a full board, made up of four hotel owner and operators, two hospitality-related positions, four general citizens interested in the hospitality industry, a chamber appointee, a city and county liaison, and a city finance officer. So, we definitely have helped crafting our budget. We have input from both the five county representatives that are on our board and the five city representatives on our board. The approval process for our budget is pretty stringent. We go through a lot of different hoops. Our executive committee first approves our budget, then our full board has to approve it. We were at city council last week, and we're here with you county commissioners today for approval. So, it's a four-step approval process. Do want to remind this board and maybe people watching at home, all revenues that we utilize, none of it's received from the city or the county. We don't get any ad valorem taxes from the city budget or from the county budget. All of our revenues are derived from the hotel motel occupancy tax, which is 6%. Out of that 6%, 3% goes to satisfy the debt on the convention center. At least 3% of that 3%, 1% goes to market the convention center, and we get 2% at the CVB. We don't have a membership organization. We're not a membership revenue producer, so we represent everyone through those occupancy tax revenues. The good news for us is we see a trend of that tax increasing. You know, Hurricane Matthew was an unfortunate event. It did have a little bit of a positive effect on occupancy tax because the hotels were utilized for those that were had to leave their homes. So, that has bumped up our tax levels. And also, Airbnbs. I don't know if anyone stayed in an Airbnb on this board, but they're becoming quite popular, an alternative to hotels. And there's actually 100 Airbnbs listed for Pitt County on the Airbnb.com site. So, there's a lot of people renting out their homes. And so, that's taxes becoming more of a significant source for us because Airbnb's do have to pay occupancy tax through state law. So, our revenues are growing. That's the good news. We'd love to see them continue that trend. Currently, right now, if you look at where we are this time, this year versus last year, our revenues are up actually 19%. That's a huge increase. That's an unheard of increase, actually. Again, Hurricane Matthew has a lot to do with that. But, you know, there's also a good feel for the economy, for the hospitality industry. Our hotels are getting higher ADRs, which are average daily rates, and higher RevPAR numbers, which are revenue per available room. So, those numbers are increasing. And when you are able to charge a little bit more for a hotel room, obviously, that tax goes up. So, that has something to do with the increased levels of occupancy tax that we can use. Our budget for this year is calculated using an estimated 11% increase from occupancy tax collections. Right now, we're at 19, but we wanted to be conservative. We're at 11%. We still have three months to collect. We run a month behind. So, we still have to collect for April, May, and June. So, we want to make sure that if there's some type of downturn, some type of decrease, we're covered. So, we are putting this budget out with an 11% increase, even though we're currently at 19% right now. The budget that we are presenting to you today is $1,228,484.45. That is funded through the occupancy tax at $1,61,783.19 miscellaneous revenue. You'll see $60.48. That's actually our CD interest that we have. And then, we do have a fund balance that we utilize to stay competitive. Almost all the CVBs across the state of North Carolina have higher budgets than we do. So, we have to use our fund balance to try to stay competitive. And our fund balance that we have using $166,647.8 for this upcoming fiscal year. The good news is, is that we're basing this on an 11% increase. Our current level of tax increase is at 19%. So, for every 1% that we go above 11% increase that we end for the year, that's another close to $10,000 that less that we use for fund balance. So, if we ended at 20% increase at the end of June, we would only use half that fund balance to make our budget work. Where's this money going to go? That's the important question that everyone wants to know. Increase in marketing. You have to market your communities as a destination. We, again, I've said this before to lots of different people and to this board, our competition is Asheville and Charlotte and Raleigh and Chapel Hill and Durham and Fayetteville, Wilmington, Greensboro, once in Salem. We compete against Myrtle Beach, Virginia Beach. All these destinations have someone like my organization that goes after business, goes after meeting planners, sports tournaments. They all want them to come to their destination. We have to be out there on the road fighting for that business to come to Greenville. So, we are increasing our marketing dollars. We're increasing our advertising dollars. We'll spend about $105,000 in advertising for both Greenville and Pitt County. We'll continue to increase the number of videos that we have. We just unveiled two videos, a meeting and events video and a sports tourism video. We also are working on a craft brewery and barbecue trail video, as well as one for the culture and arts. Those are important. I came a couple of months ago and talked a little bit about our craft beer and barbecue trail. That is currently in the planning stages. That is a huge opportunity to draw in leisure travelers. We'll have a trail here with some of our barbecue restaurants throughout the county and also some of our craft breweries in Greenville. And people can choose. They may just want to do the barbecue. They may just want to do the craft brewery tours. But it will draw in people from outside of Greenville and Pitt County to take part of those tours. So, we're excited about that because we want this to be something that we can draw in more leisure travel, but also to supplement things to do for our convention and meeting attendees. As I mentioned before, we're going to be working with media more. We're also going to start doing consumer-based shows as well. Marketing Greenville-Pitt County as a leisure destination. And those consumer-based shows that we're looking at going to are part of the Visit North Carolina or the State Tourism Office travel schedule. So, we can actually piggyback on the state of North Carolina and just pay our travel costs and not have to pay registration. So, it's a very good effective way to utilize our money. We did one this past year. We went up to New York City, actually Melville, New York on Long Island, and came back with almost 800 leads of people interested in either retiring to eastern North Carolina or visiting eastern North Carolina. So, for the state to pay our way, for the state to pay the registration and we just pay our travel, that's a good bargain. And then, also, staff education. Everyone on our staff, including myself, is currently on a designation track, a new designation track. So, mine, for instance, is the CDME, which is a Certified Destination Management Executive. And there's about 400 of those across the country. Everybody on my staff is going through a program like that because I want a staff that is the best educated and best working staff in the state. And then, of course, we are required by law to give 1% of our tax collections to the convention center for marketing. That happens every year, and that projection is $353,927.73. So, when you look at that million, too, $353,927.73 is actually going to the convention center. We paid that out on a monthly basis. That's per the inter-local agreement that was signed, and that is legally their money. So, we distribute it once a month. And we are fortunate because we get to see what they're spending it on, and we, our board actually approves their marketing budget. So, there is some oversight on our part, but legally, they're entitled to that money. So, there's not too much to our budget. I just kind of wanted to be brief. I know you guys, I think I'm last out of all the presentations you listened to. So, I wanted to be brief, but just here to answer any questions. Thank you for your support. Tell you how encouraged and excited I am about the growth of Greenville and Pitt County and how much fun it is. It's a lot of work right now, but it's a lot of fun right now representing this area because there's constant movement, there's constant ideas, there's great people in both the city and our smaller townships throughout the county that really want to see us grow. And for the first time in a long time, I'm really seeing really good, solid partnerships come together with common goals and values. So, I think that's great. But I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Can I mention Burke, please?
Andrew, thank you so much. How much of that baseball park in Lenore County proceeds do you get? Do they live in the hotel?
Well, we were fortunate enough, you're talking about the Wood Ducks, right, the Down East Wood Ducks?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they play in Kinston, and we were fortunate enough to capture all the away teams. So, every away team stays in Greenville, actually. So, we went down and talked to the general manager down there, and we were able to work out a scenario where they would stay here instead of Kinston. So, that has worked very well to our advantage. That's about a million dollars into the local economy just throughout the season, having them stay here instead of Kinston. Having the team, I think, is a good amenity for the region. So.
That's good vision. My next question is, what is your projection for the future as far as cultural entertainment?
That's, in my opinion, that's the biggest thing we have to work on. And we're making strides. You know, this past year, we've had, I think, probably the two greatest things that happened to help wake people up around here about maybe culture and history, and arts are important, too, is the perceptions and recognitions exhibit, which Burke Ullsle did at the Greenville Museum of Art. And I don't know if anyone went to that, but we sponsored the first weekend, that first Friday night, and there were 600 people in the museum of art. And it felt like to me, I came from Washington DC, that's my hometown. I felt like I was back in DC. There was a buzz about the people, and there was, you know, comments and collections and people talking about the art. And it was really good, and we got a lot of good press out of that, too. And then, the African-American jazz series that's taking place, the last one was just this past Friday, has been big. And that's drawn people in, we know, from other counties. And that's what we want, is for people to come in from other counties to experience Greenville-Pitt County. We have a whole bunch of people in eastern North Carolina that drive right past Greenville to go to Raleigh for their culture. And that's not right. We need to keep them here. And we're losing dollars, too. I mean, so, that, I think those two are the biggest things that happen with culture and history. You know, the Village and Farm Museum in Winterville has all the potential in the world, all the potential in the world to be, if they could get open on a regular basis. Right now, we can't market them. I can't go and say, "Hey, bring this tour" because they're not open, or I don't know when they're going to be open. It's open by appointment only. We're trying to figure out how to help them as much as we can because that's a really good asset that we could utilize for day trips, school groups, you know, for conventions and meetings, you know, "Let's go do a barbecue out there for your evening event," whatever it might be. But that's a hidden gem just waiting to explode, I think. So, there's a lot of good things.
That women empowerment group really pulls everybody from the east to Raleigh, and is a big-ticket item as well. So, I was just wondering what's going through your head as relates to that.
Yeah, we need to be a well-rounded community, and I think we've got most of the pieces in place. But the cultural and arts are probably a little bit behind, and that's something that we'd like to have increase.
Thank you.
I see no other comments, and thank you very much for the fine presentation.
I'm glad you mentioned the culture and arts because on your budget for highlights, you have BM barbecue trail, and I wrote down, maybe you should say slash culture and arts.
Yeah, it's all, it is part of that. It's part of leisure infrastructure. It's part of leisure marketing. So, we kind of lump that all in. People are going to come for leisure, for arts and culture. So, we lump that in together.
You know, the BM barbecue, that just kind of stands out.
It's a focus that we're looking at for sure because craft breweries are, it's a new tourism tool that people are using. Ask the people in Asheville, if you ask the city council or county commissioners from Buncombe County, what craft brewery's done for Asheville, they can give you some solid numbers of what it's done for their tourism. And some of the, obviously Asheville's got a lot of other things going on, too, but it's part of it.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. At this time, county commissioner and our county manager, rather, and our finance director may have some information to share with us in terms of the where we go from here. We may be able to make a decision as to what we're going to do in terms of the budget and possibly approval at this time. Scott, if you have some additional information you want to share at this time.
Well, obviously, the board has gone through the week of the different pairing for the different agencies. The preliminary budget was presented Monday, the 16th, or 17th, Tuesday, the 17th, sorry. And at this point, I guess we would like to hear from you as to, we've heard indirectly some of your desires, but I don't really know how to respond other than what has been presented unless, I am hearing desires for things to be added. I think I did try to state in the budget message that we've really maxed out on, A, fund balance preparation, B, other revenues. And in order to add some of these positions and services, either we're going to have to cut in other areas, or we're going to have to increase revenues on top of what we already have on the table.
Well, let me just say this. I've heard from quite a few of my constituents, and certainly, I realize that I represent the whole county of Pitt. But also, I represent those individuals who vote me into office as far as the district that I serve. I've gotten at least five calls from the budget, and I want to tell you, first of all, I thank you for your fine organization and your balanced budget that you presented to us without having them raise tax. Due to the current situation that has existed with the citizens of Pitt County, with the Hurricane Matthews and the flooding, it has brought some tremendous pressure on a lot of our citizens, especially those who are low-income and on fixed rates. It has really devastated them. We are, I'm having people that call me that are having to choose between buying food and getting proper medication on a month-on-a-basis. And so, they just can't afford any additional revenue at this time. So, I am certainly in support of the current budget now as was presented without having to raise any additional tax. I do know, and I realize that, we may be kicking it a can down the road, but with everything said and done, I have to look at the total situation that is existing as of today with the citizens that I represent and the county as a whole. Now, the other point is that I'm hoping that because of the growth that we have in Pitt County and the growth that we have in the city of Greenville, just recently announced by the mayor that we're projected to have about a million people population-wise in the city of Greenville in the next year or two. So, hopefully, that will project additional revenues for our county. So, that is my statement in terms of the budget. And that is what I'm proposing at this time. Thank you.
Scott, are you on?
Scott, are you wanting input from us further today, or do you anticipate Monday at the next meeting that you want some more input? What's your request?
Probably the sooner the better would be. I mean, if there is input today, I mean, I've heard of a lot of input from the board in terms of desire to add these positions. And I mean, collectively, it seems like the overall input expression is to, that the expectation is that we do add additional things to the budget. Honestly, as manager, I mean, I've got the original budget presentation that I made Monday to you, also made, presented the fund balance trend of how that's going out, but without adjusting the rate, to some extent, like was illustrated in the alternative budget model that was presented to you Monday. I don't really see how we can add anything more, because we've already maxed out the $4 million plug. And also, we just really need to know what your desire is as of going forward. Do you want to stay at the 18% plus fund balance? Or are you comfortable going lower than that? Because the trend is that if we, if you adopt the budget as presented, that a year from now, we'd be at 18%. Then if, again, if we went another year, we'd be at 16.3. So in order for me really to know what your expectation is, I need to know what your expectation is of that fund balance percentage, and what your expectation is to add these additional positions and services that you've heard in there. And I will admit, I told each and every department head, I said, your justifications are right on target. But I said, we have limited resources, limited funds, and I said, we've, out of the 27 positions, let's take that, for example, where we only approved or recommended six, we were doing it within available resources. And even though Dr. Morrow, I mean, he gave a very convincing argument, the DSX, that's Director Janet Elliott. So that's kind of where, kind of where I am right now.
I've got two or three questions. May I proceed then? Mr. Chairman?
You may.
Your budget, as you presented, Scott, was after much consultation and dealing with all of the agencies that made certain requests to you, and you came back with your recommendations, some for what they asked and some for not what they asked. I think your budget that you presented is well-taken. I think you've stated the situation, and I'm sure there's some critiquing that needs to be done to it. But I think your analysis of our financial position in this county, that's what it takes to meet those needs. You and your finance officer together has done a good job with that. That having been said, I want to add one thing. My request in addition to that would be to add $5,000 to the Farval Library, which is not on the, within this. My purpose for that is, that y'all know, many years ago, all of the libraries and people came in and made presentations and big to-dos about it, and we told them, we're going to do what we need to do, and that's what we did, and that's gone by the wayside. But since then, Farval does, that library there has increased tremendously, probably the second or third largest in the county. I know what we have in Greenville, and I know the others. I'm not saying what the others get accurate or not accurate, but it's five schools that are supported in and around Farval with that library. And I think it would be very fitting to increase their amount to $10,000 instead of five. And I also concur with the chairman's, since we're speaking, remark about, I like your approach to the budget, not increasing the taxes at this time. You talk about kicking the can down the street. We'll get, when we get to the can, it ends the street. I'm talking about for this one budgetary year that you've got presentation, and I'm in concurrence with what you recommended. Thank you.
Mr. Ward.
I appreciate the job that you all do as far as the budget is concerned, and the majority of the time, I feel like we do serve ourselves well by going with your recommendations. And not that we're not going to go with your recommendations, but there've been some things proposed. I don't know whether you all feel like you have had a chance to see how that would affect the budget, and if there were some other areas that you could cut or whatever, or rearrange. But also, if I would like to get a report, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I would like to see what it would be. What would a tax increase? It may not be what is a top-of-the-line tax increase, but what would it be to be able to add these things back in that we've talked about? And it's not a lot, people, when you consider the size of our budget and what's going on. So I would like to see a budget come back to us with as many of the recommendations, including the Farval Library and these positions, as $13,000, was that correct, a year? Budget plus the zero. And I think one for the Health Department, at least one. I don't know whether we are talking about both of them or not, but I don't know what effect those things that we've talked about here, and what kind of effect it's going to have on the budget. And I think we need that. The other thing I think you need to come back with us on, and I know we have it in our notebook, but I'd like for the public to see what increase would happen monthly to their taxes on their, their avalorum taxes, based on certain cost of housing, you know, the ownership, 110,000, 150,000, 80,000, whatever they would have to end up paying per month for a tax increase.
Well, based on the budget that you presented to us, it's not a balanced budget. It's still drawn upon fund balance. I think we really need to look at it from the perspective of, what if we don't hit fund balance? What might that tax rate need to be? I have had no phone calls. That doesn't mean I won't get some after my comments here. But, but the fact is, if I remember the numbers right, at the last revale, 54% of the people that own property in Pitt County, their rates actually went down during revale. So 46%, and typically, they are in the higher-income neighborhoods, they saw increases. The amount that was saved on that 54%, I would guess would be more than a dollar a month. And if we talk about going up a penny, we're talking, for the average person, it's going to be less than a dollar a month. What does an average person own as far as a house and saving two automobiles, probably not brand-new ones? I mean, when you really think about it, how much is that? And we either provide the services, or we don't. It's my opinion, one of the most risky things to the county that we have are gangs. I have harped on us not doing enough since I was elected, I believe, in 2000, the first time, and since then, that we need to do more with gangs. The sheriff asked for four positions last year, we gave him two. He's asking for another position this year for that. He really ought to have the four. I'm not even sure four is enough for the threat that that poses to the county as a whole with the crime, the violent crime. Not just robbery, but it could be rape, it can be the trafficking, you know, of children. These gangs are brutal. I think we ought to make Pitt County the most unhospitable county in the state of North Carolina, perhaps in the country of 50 states, for them to be in, and that they don't want to be here. Let them go somewhere else. Force them to go somewhere else. Well, we're not going to do that if we underfund any program geared to deal with that problem. And I think it's been underfunded. I've said it, I think, every year that we've had a budget meeting, I'll probably continue to say it. But the bottom line is, the majority of the people that are likely to see a tax increase, really, and a significant tax increase, are not going to be the poorest of the poor if we were to raise our rate, and I'll throw a number out there, it's 71 cents. Why do I use the 71? Because based on what I think I know about what a penny raises, and we're at 68.6 now, and if you go to 71, that's a 2.4% increase, that will create enough revenue, I believe, to cover the shortfall that we're actually, or actually having, because it's not a balanced budget, because we're trying to pull from fund balance. I don't think, I think the economy's going to improve. I think this is the time for us to consider, if we're going to do an increase, this needs to be a time to do it. I don't think, even though the economy's getting better and that, at least I hope it is, and that we want to reduce our fund balance beyond what it is now. And, you know, I, like I said, I might be getting some calls now because of what I'm saying.
I'm sure you will.
But think about it, it's not that much money for any individual family, but collectively, it's a lot of money for the county to be able to step up and do the things it needs to do, and the various organizations that have come before us and asking for worthwhile new positions or funding for our things that they need. And that's all I have for right now. There may be more later.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in listening to all this, we're in four basic positions. One of them is very unlikely, and that would be, by some miracle of heaven, the state started doing its job. And which would, which, again, I don't think I can say it enough, just on education, and that's not even, I think, when I talked to Dwayne, it was 1.8 million in unfunded mandates for human services. That's not counting DSS, that's just public health. You're looking at, of the avalorum taxes, over 10% of everything we spend that we're charging people for owning a home in Pitt County, over 10% of it are things that we're not even supposed to be doing. That's just on those two departments. That's not even a full detailed list of running down every service that, by the way, we're required to provide. And I think we need to do a good job of educating the citizens that we're just not going on these service adventures just to do it, that these come down from Raleigh or from Washington, and they land on us to not only fund, but you're not just funding the service, you have to fund the staff and the benefits and the retirement and everything that goes along with an employee to make the mandates that they push on us go down. So that 10% is only scratching the surface of what we're forced into paying. The other positions we're in are simple in that they are just what they are. We either go with the proposal, but with, just going with the general proposal means that we go into the fund balance and we get down to the razor's edge of what our policy is. And by doing that, we start to risk our bond rating, we start to risk getting put back on watch list, we start to risk negative outlooks, because while we taught last year that the rating agencies are okay with us being within our policy and occasionally going into fund balance here and there, but two years in a row starts to look like a pattern of not just, you know, patching things and replenishing, but spending down, it starts to look like a pattern, and they hate a pattern. And I'm not fond of it either when we get that close to it. The way to deal with that is, the other two options that I'm talking about is, we either start making cuts, and with the limited flexibility we have, most of those cuts would have to go directly to employees. They either don't get paid, they're not making huge salaries anyway, and then we're talking about cutting, we would have to cut any cost-of-living adjustment or merit payout, just, and not to mention, half of what we had apportioned for education, half of what we apportioned for the community college, plus another $76,000 somewhere, just to make the ends meet, and as has been said a few times, kick the can down the road. Sooner or later, we got to pick up the can, and I don't know what that total cost is going to be. And then the last one is just to raise taxes, but before, and I know the tax increase would be modest, the word tax increase is way, it would cost you more to print it than it would per month to pay it, because it's nominal, you're talking about two bucks for every $200,000 of value per month. But then my concern with the tax increase is, how much time does that buy us? Are we still, because, because this is my problem, is what we're funding is mainly things that are forced on us, mainly things that are outside our statutory and constitutional requirements. So if we do, were to raise taxes, are we really just in another way kicking the can down the road for the state and the federal government to further expand what we're having to do, and then we're back in the same position? Are we just buying a few years? So my question on the can we're kicking, is it a can that when we pick it up, do we pick it up in the form of a tax increase, or do we really just start reducing services and really just let people know who's causing the services to be reduced? Because we're negotiating with a gun to our head right now on what we're going to do as a county. And it's, I get that life isn't fair, and government's even less so, but the people deserve to at least know the truth about why things are happening the way they're happening, and why we're even being forced to consider these things. Because as I mentioned earlier, if the state covered the, just on the education piece, just the teachers, and if they also covered the clerical, that's, we could put $7 million into fund balance and then fund every other request that we had as far as increases. That, just the education portion, is $2 million more than all of the funding increases that were requested by all departments. And so I know I didn't really give any happy words or anything, tending to filibuster a little bit, and I apologize for that, Mr. Chairman, but we have to get these facts out. And I'm not in a position, I don't know what we need to do. I need to hear, I've requested some information from the manager, and it's going to take some time to put together, because I want to know exactly how much flexibility we have. You know, people see $245 million budget, but of that, our authority is only up to about 190 million of it. And then when you factor in paying the people that do the job, that dollar amount of flexibility really gets down into the small millions. Not, which is not a small amount of money, but every time you do anything, it costs a huge amount of money, because it's delineated over 180,000 people in a county that has to run different programs. And so, and that's what I'm asking for, is just so that we can paint the true picture of the rock in a horror place that we are jammed between every 12 months by circumstances that are outside of our control from a group that has a bigger pulpit, a bigger media buy, that goes around telling everybody what a great job they're doing, and that they're cutting a billion dollars in taxes, and they have a $500 million surplus. And then when I go to buy peanut butter, I'm getting yelled at because I'm considering charging an extra two bucks a month on a $200,000 house, just so I can get the kids taught, the trash picked up, and the neighborhoods paved since the state won't pick those up, and the deputies paid, and add the deputies that we need, and try to stave off this gang problem that we have in this county over $2, and they're cutting a billion in Raleigh. And it is, it's just wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I've added nothing to the conversation, but that's just how I feel about it.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Scott and Dwayne, for your budget. You all know by now that I agree with most of the things that Glenn has said.
Stick with me, man.
I'm definite with you. I'm definite with you. And you know, this year, we've done some unusual things on our side of the river to pick up the slack and assist and help out, picking up trash. I don't know how it got done, but it got, the bush-hogging is done. People are feeling good, they are working, they're trying to do their part, cutting the grass all the way to the road, they're doing some things. People come in and throw it out. It's not saw, but we're working towards it. Two people who've never done a garden, doing a garden. So we are making positive efforts to make a difference in our own lives. But I think we have not done a good job as far as educating the public about what we do with the tax dollars, where their money go, and who's not doing their part. I think we should do a better job of putting that to the citizens of this county, because that's the weakness. You scraping and scraping and scraping, and they're saying, no new taxes, no new taxes. And yet, you're getting pushed to do more with less. And that's not fair. So I'm with Glenn as far as at least sharing with the public what we've got to do, and not passing the budget today, but at least give the public some time to give us some input and see, put it out there. input and see, put it out there. Put it out there, what we are paying, where their tax dollars are going. Clear, not all jumbled up, just straightforward, so that the everyday citizen can read, the tax dollars go here, we should be spending this for state, the state should be doing this, and the county does this, we are doing this. They need to know that, because after all, the citizen or senator, those people do wrong. They are sending them to make these decisions. And I'm not talking about our folks now, you know, I'm not talking about our folks. But if we put it out there, someone in other counties are going to pick it up. And then we have disasters east of 95 that we got to deal with. So please, do the advertising about where the tax dollars is going, because the everyday citizen does not know. Thank you so much. You are great, I think you're level-headed too.
My comments are going to be brief because most of the comments have already been made. What I look at here is, we have a decision to make between now and June the 30th. I agree 100% that we have got to put the pressure on Raleigh, we need to advertise to our folks where the tax dollars are going and the source of the revenue, where that source is coming from and where it ought to be coming from, based upon the statutory regulations. We do have to do that, but in the meantime, we've got to pass a budget between now and June the 30th. And I am personally, you know, I'm a fund balance person, and I know that this budget as it is proposed right now would reduce our fund balance down to 18%. And I am very concerned about getting that low. Our goal is 18 to 20%, and I'm concerned about getting it down to that 18%. Now, if we do the eight tenths of a cent, eight tenths of a penny, then that would reduce our budget, our fund balance down to 18.7%, which to me is a little more livable, a little more acceptable. Now, that's eight tenths of a penny. If we were to be so bold as to increase that to a penny, then I think that would be enough money generated to cover Mark's request for 5,000, social services requests for the 13,000, which would give them the three additional positions, and also enough to add the one gang member, the one, a gang deputy. Because I think that would generate enough money to do that. Now, we can make that decision to do that now, or we're going to be forced to make it next year, because if we don't make it next year, then the fund balance is going to go down to the 16% category. And we surely do not want that, because then that's going to start impacting our bond rating. You know, so that's something, Tom, that I'll get some phone calls on also, that I think I could live with, is the penny increase, which would take our fund balance to around 18.7%, which to me is more livable, more acceptable, and I think I could live with that and bear the arrows that would be shot.
Supporting what he said, can, do we have information in there that you can tell us right now what one cent would amount to a person who has a house? I think it's somewhere in our book.
Page 11.
Page 11, but will you say it?
Page seven of your binder.
Number seven in the front.
But will you say it, please?
Sure.
And say it clearly?
A one-cent tax increase on a $100,000 house.
Okay, nice and loud there.
A one-cent tax increase on a $100,000 house would result in $10 per year or 83 cents per month.
Okay, $10 a year on a...
$100,000 house.
$100,000 house.
So double that for a $200,000 house, $20 a year.
For a $200,000 house.
$1.66 per month.
It would be around $20 a year. And I think those figures are so important. I don't, in fact, the first time I saw that, that file back, and I think page eight is very important that we've got in our booklet, or our budget book. In the year 2000, 2001, we had an adopted rate of .68. It fluctuated a little bit, but never over .71, right?
Correct.
That was the highest. And now, in 2017, we're still at .68. So, I mean, I think that there are those of us who feel like, I mean, we fought so hard for our fund balance, we went way down, and we were in trouble, we had never been in trouble in Pitt County, that I, since I've been on here with borrowing money and our rates going down. And this is a small amount of money to get done what we need to do for these citizens. We heard these things that were said from the Health Department and Social Services, and those are our citizens out there that we have got to give the services to, deal with them, and help them along the way. And yes, the state's not doing their share. That's not really news for many of us, but it's been worse for the past five, six years. But I feel like I could support that right now, so that you all could move on and add those things we've talked about.
Mr. Chairman, let me add one more comment. If we do the budget as is recommended, I would like to remind everybody, because the first thing's going to be said, well, you need to cut spending, we have not funded six, in excess of $6 million of the request from our various entities in this budget. I mean, the school system wanted 2.1 million in this budget.
2.5.
2.5. This budget has them at around 700.
Three-quarters of a million, correct.
So even, even by doing what we are talking about doing, we are still building, I think, a very conservative budget.
Absolutely.
And if you were to ask some of the department heads, they would surely say, we're not funding enough, is what they've already said by their request.
That's a great point. But Jimmy, if you say that, then your proposal of adding a penny, it doesn't even really begin to address it.
That is true.
And I think the 71 cents that I said, I know I'm speaking out of turn here, that's really a target we really seriously, as a board, ought to consider, as unpalatable as it may appear on the surface. It's not that much money specifically to any family. Again, 54% of the people that own property experienced less ad valorem taxes after the revow. It's really the upper incomes that are going to be taking and can afford the additional money. I don't think a penny's going to do it to them.
Well, a penny, I'm okay with a penny. If we want to reassess again next year about adding another penny, then we can do that.
But that won't happen next year, and you know why.
Well...
You know why. Grandstanding will be next year. Now that one, I'm going to give 3-1 odds on. Anybody wants to start a bet? I'm going to go spend the money now, because I'm going to win that bet.
Oh, my goodness.
Commissioner Huggins.
Well, I want to thank the manager and the deputy for all the hard work they have done on this budget, putting it together and meeting with the departments, and then presenting it to us. And I hear the departments that came before us made compelling requests, and I was really understanding of their requests. I don't know that, I'm, I don't, I'm not there with raising taxes yet, the way I feel about it. And as Commissioner Webb said about what Raleigh is not doing, I'm not ready to take our delegation off the, to say that they are doing fine, you know, because I think as long as they are there, they have a job to do, and I know they have one vote, but I think, you know, they need to make our request known and be able to compromise and work the other legislators up there with saying that, you know, that we as legislators are not doing what we are supposed to be doing for our counties, and helping our counties to meet their, meet their individual needs. So, again, I'm not there with raising taxes. So I think where I am is supporting what you propose, and even though I heard the school system, I heard social services, I heard Dr. Morrow with the Health Department, I heard that, please don't think, I did not hear that, and understand the need, what they presented was very alarming to me. So that's just kind of my comment right now on the budget that you presented.
Scott, you recommend a 3% cost of living increase for every employee, is that correct?
No, it was only 2%.
How mu...
2%, even though the CPI was 2.5.
All right, now what about the merit? What's that going to be?
That stays the same, it's always...
How much is the combined going to be?
Well, it depends, an employee can either get a 1.2% merit or a 2.4, depending upon where they lie on the salary scale, on the increment scale, so they could either get a...
3.2 or 4.4.
How much, Wayne?
3.2.
I can hear you, I can't hear him. I'm sorry I don't have my hearing aids in, but go ahead, Wayne.
Either a 3.2% or a 4.4%.
In arriving at these figures, did you get any compensations from the private sector as to what cost of living they've had, what the economy has brought about?
Well, I think when we use the CPI index that's put out by the feds, it is an index of both private and public. What we do is compare ourselves against other local government entities.
Other government.
Asking them what they're doing. But again, the CPI is a combination of public and private, it's all economies per se, it's the national economy.
Are you saying that then, that those figures, percentages fall within line with the private sector and other government agents? Is that what you're telling me?
I would say partially, not entirely.
But not quite?
Correct. The cost of living definitely, but not any merits or bonuses.
And we had about, excuse me, we had about a 2.5 growth in valuations, is that correct?
2.68 in the tax base itself.
And so, combined, we're talking about a 4.5, 4.5 increase, but only a 2.5 or 4 increase in valuations.
But when we talk about a 2.68% increase in the ad valorem tax base, that doesn't increase, that does not include the increase to sales tax and other revenues we have as well. The overall revenue increase, Wayne?
It's probably more about maybe 4%, 4% overall.
Well, you just get my point. But, you know, I asked the sheriff yesterday about one deputy or one position, he wanted four, and we said, you gave him one, gave him two last year. I asked him $108,000, if I remember what it would take to fund that one. Have you looked at that anymore, Scott?
Other than what we explained yesterday, that cost included both the vehicle, the equipment, plus the salary for the individual, so that was a fully loaded year one cost. The actual, I mean, we have a table that shows the cost for the actual deputy.
But I think he said the one at the jail would be less than that, because he would not have to have a car, whatever.
Correct, a surveillance officer.
And I think that was the one that he wanted out of the...
But anyway, you've put in your budget 30 cars, does that mean there's another 32 cars going to be in it then, instead of 30?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Tom, come suggest bringing the two back in, won't you, Tom?
Yes, sir, and that was my comment to you, that he was saying that, well, I can accommodate this position using the 30 cars we're going to buy, but I'm just saying, that doesn't, that doesn't alleviate trying to get these older cars off the road and reduce these maintenance costs, if you're going to do that. You need, if you're going to expand, you need to have the resources for that new expansion agreement.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think I'm getting back to the point that I said at the beginning of this discussion. You've heard requests or input from all the commissioners. I don't think you're in a position today to give us clear modification of those figures so that we can make an answer for you today. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
So you want us to come back Monday night? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Chairman?
If that's, I agree with you in terms of, we have various opinions in terms of where we need to go in this. So, Scott, if you, how long would it take you to consider the considerations of the recommendations of some of the commissioners, along with some who have said that they wanted to, do not want a tax increase, and some said it's maybe a 7 cents tax increase? How long would it take you to get all of this together and ready to be, to present it back to us in terms of where we are?
If you'd like us to add something, have it prepared for Monday night, we could do that, we could add to the, we already published the agenda for Monday, but we could add that as an item to the agenda as a follow-up to the workshops and provide...
Could become a little early.
Sheriff, the board would like to start early and do, well, actually, you've advertised next week as your alternate week for budget workshops from 8:30 to noon time. Not to say you couldn't deviate from that and do it at 4 o'clock or 5 o'clock.
Or 5.
Okay.
Could I include, make sure that what Mark said, come back with those things that we've suggested, and see where you can take out, put in, whatever. But I would also like for you to come back with the budget with a one-cent increase, and what would we get for that? And I still would like to have something up on the screen for the public to see between now and Monday, relative to a one-cent increase, what it would cost if you have a house that $80,000, 100, 120, 150, whatever. I just think that...
Sure.
That's a visual that we need to put out there.
When you're talking about...
We can be prepared to do that.
So I would like to recommend that you come back with that.
When you're talking about put it on the screen, what screen you're talking about? This one that goes on the internet?
That goes all the way out into the county.
Okay, okay, all right.
Now, you're going to come back with some of the requests, but also showing no tax increase?
No, no.
No, is that not what Mark was saying?
I mean, there's, basically, there's no additional revenue to add additional, to expand the budget with positions and services without some revenue source identified. So what I'm hearing is to come, right now, you've got the presented budget as is...
With no additions, though.
Other than the six, six and a half positions that are recommended.
So I think what Ms. Huggins is asking is, is there a way that, are you going to, can you eliminate some things and put in some of those things, and come back with that kind of budget?
Because I think what you want to do, 5,000 for Fongville, that's not in the budget, not for the library, for the library.
You can add those, but what you would have to do is show a further reduction in the fund balance.
Or you need to...
If you did increase taxes.
Or you need to direct this, where to cut.
But we would have to direct you, right?
Well, so that $5,000, though, I guess what we're saying is, where you presented the budget as is, as you're presenting, so $5,000 is just in addition to...
Right, I mean, the $5,000 for the library is not a...
It's a minimum, yeah.
That's a drop in the bucket to what this other we're talking about, $500,000.
That's exactly right. So in that respect, the $5,000 could be considered as the budget is presented already.
Right, it's just all these other positions and services, whether detention, health, DSS, I mean, all the, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars by the time... By the time you add up the benefits and the personal costs and the benefits that go along with them.
Well, I think I hear several things. I think I hear the fact that to keep the budget as is and give us your consideration on that, and along with the other two or three scenarios that was presented, then I think we can go from there.
So, we have the budget as is, as presented on Tuesday, the 17th. We have, as one scenario on the table, we have a budget with a one-cent tax increase that we would then show keeping the fund balance at an 18.73% projection, forecast for June 30th of 2018, using whatever additional revenues are left from that to then fund additional positions. And then the third scenario?
Is the 71 cent. 71 cents, yeah. I think that he, I think that he did mention the 71 cent. But...
Or are we looking for, well, maybe I heard Commissioner Floyd Huggins saying, "Are you looking for the base budget as presented with some additions, but offsetting cuts to add those additions?" Is that what I'm hearing? And then a 71-cent budget as well?
I'm gonna leave that up to you, Scott, as though... I believe that's what we need to have. Anything less than that, and we're gonna be hitting fund balance again next year. A penny won't do it. It's not gonna do it. And I want to keep reiterating, it's not gonna be the poorest of poor that are paying this. They've already got, if they've had real property, they already have seen less by reduction in ad valorem taxes. It was more than what any increase to them would be. At 71 cents, it's gonna be the higher income that's gonna be paying the additional amount, the vast majority of it. And if we are trying to kid ourselves to think that we'll raise, possibly raise it a penny this year, and that's gonna make it all better, it's not. Because we'll be hitting fund balance next year. And next year, we will not have an increase. It won't happen. This board will not allow it to happen. And everybody on this board knows it won't happen and knows why it won't happen.
Dwayne. Why? Why wouldn't it happen, Tom? Are you prejudging the board?
Yes, sir, I sure am.
Tell me what it is that you don't think will happen, sir?
History repeats itself. It's an election year. Okay, I'll say it. It's an election year.
That's why I want you to...
And there's gonna be six members of this board, where they'll do some political grandstanding. That happens every blasted time.
Dwayne.
Yes, sir.
May I respond to one thing, Mr. Chairman? Tom talked about the increase in ad valorem taxes of 54%. I don't know where he's getting his percentage, and that's irrelevant to my point. But he's absolutely right about the people with more property will pay more money. But that's not gonna hurt those people.
That's right.
Because they're gonna deduct it from their taxes for rental and whatnot. But what concerns me is the person that's got one home. And I don't want to increase that person's one-home taxes. Or a mom in pop shop that's got a room in the back where to sleep and eat and serve people, and they're on call from 5:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, and they haven't had a cost of living increase. They haven't had a merit increase. And they haven't had anything but that little bit that they get from the serve with their hands for 8 and 10 and 20 hours a day. And we want to increase their taxes on their property? That's why I'm against tax increase.
We're talking about a dollar or less a month for them.
Dwayne. Yes, sir.
I had a question. If we increase the taxes by one penny and even add those two or three things we were talking about, we would still end up with a balance of, a fund balance of around 18.7%, correct?
Off the top of my head, I would say yes.
I'm looking, I'm looking at your sheet here. Well, it doesn't have a number on it, but I'm looking at the last sheet.
The alternatives.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So, that should keep it at 18.7. Now, if we do that, is Tom's statement correct that we would then be looking at another tax increase next year? If we, if our goal was to keep it at 18.7?
If your goal is to keep it at 18.7, it's going to be really a balancing act. Because, and I say that because, keep in mind that fund balance is a ratio. So, it is a ratio of what you have left over as compared to your expenditures. So, as your denominator in that equation increases, meaning expenditures go up, which if we put positions in, we will be increasing expenditures. So, as your expenditures go up, then you're gonna have your inverse relationship on your fund balance. So, it will float. It will depend on where we end up with those total expenditures.
So, the answer to my question is, you don't know.
I do not know at this time.
Very good, thank you.
I have a question that, since you, Mark and Tom talked about that the tax increase would only affect the higher-income ones. But something you said that sparked my interest is that, okay, maybe it will affect the higher-income, but those people who own rental property, will they pass that down to their renters? That's my question.
If you want me to respond to her, my illustration, I might have misunderstood. I said people that have rental property, high-income people, they can pay there because they're gonna get it deducted with tax first. But a little person that doesn't have a business tax deduction will not. I didn't mean to infer, Mary, that...
And?
And that the people shouldn't pay taxes, they should. But I was trying to keep that small person from having to pay an increase. That was my concern.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying now, will the lower-income, the rental people have an increase because they're gonna, the people who own the property, own rental property, pass it down to the rent? That's my question.
Probably would.
So, it's still gonna affect the low-income...
Low-income.
Low-income people. That's what I'm getting at.
Right. Very good. Scott and Dwayne, you have your charge.
Yes, sir. None of these, but we have our charge.
Yeah, and we are gonna be meeting at 5 o'clock then in terms of...
Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we ask you to adjourn this meeting today through the workshops and let us advertise for a, the attorney agrees, for a special workshop or meeting for 5 o'clock Monday, May 22nd, from 5 to 6, prior to your 6 o'clock regularly advertised regular meeting?
That sounds great.
Sounds good.
Do we need that in the form of a motion?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
A second.
It's been moved properly, second that we adjourn. All in favor, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed. Motion carried.